I'll call the regular meeting of the Ohio, no, pardon me, before that we need to report out, or do we do that in the regular meeting?
We can do that in the regular meeting.
Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order, the regular meeting of the Ohio City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. James, will you do the honors, or do you have a flag down there?
Sure.
Okay, all rise. Then we get Ryan Doody, he has a flag behind him there.
Yeah, I just saw that. Okay, I think James Hahn is gonna put an image of the flag up for us, and so right, hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, Dan, the nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, James. Doing a groups on Zoom is lax a little, doesn't it? Okay, let's see, let's get the right agenda out here, okay. The approval of the agenda, are there any changes that anyone would like to make?
Mayor, I'll be pulling item I from the consent calendar.
Okay, are there any other items from the consent calendar that you want to pull? Anybody? Okay, if not, then do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any objection? Not hearing any, they so ordered. Bill, I, is that your item on the consent?
Well, wait, Mayor, there's a presentation on the agenda?
Oh, that's right, we do, yeah. I jumped over that? I did, yes, okay, well, hang on for the, for your item I later, and we'll go to the presentation, James.
Yes, and today's presentation is going to be by Chris Danch, representing the Fire Safe Council. I see he's in the, in the chat room, so Mr. Hahn, if you can let Mr. Danch in, we will...
Okay, and this was for Chris to give us his view on the fire, extreme fire map, and...
Yes, and then I think that, and I think he's also planning to do an overview on some of the Fire Safe Council projects.
What?
Okay, but this isn't a grant application, is it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks.
So I see, I see Chris Danch is in the room, but it looks like he's muted.
There he is.
There he is, there he is. There he is, look at that.
Yeah.
Looks like a disc jockey.
Flying a plane or something, you know, I'm talking to the tower, and...
Yeah, right.
Right. Well, that's because we have an open architecture in our house, and you can hear everything, so in order to keep this thing just in my office in the house, I got this gear on.
Okay.
There you go. Well, I do have a, I mean, the reason for this is to update the council on where we are with the Fire Safe Council since we last presented in December, I believe, of last year, give an update on where we are, and to look at, start again the discussion about, about funding in various ways, and of course, we, and I'll get to that, but I also have a PowerPoint that I can just walk us through, so it'll be a little more organized.
Okay.
Appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to update.
Sure. Proceed.
How do you work the PowerPoint? I gave that, is that something?
Yeah, let me see, I could pull, I think I have the...
It's up.
Oh, actually, never mind.
And do you advance it, or do I advance it? I think I do.
Yeah, I think Mr. Hahn is going to advance it, so you'll have to let him know when to...
Okay, well, the next slide, then. Let's get started. Number two. It's harder if you don't have any control.
Yeah, I understand that.
I know you do.
I want to share that opportunity with someone else.
Advance to number two, is this the right slide?
That's number one.
That's number one.
Even worse when there's no control, oh, there we go.
That's, yeah. Actually, that's number four, number two, and this is really just for anybody watching, since I think you guys already know all of this, but we have been around since, for 20 years now, doing our work in a variety of ways, and that is continuing, though I will say that the traditional source of funding that has been here for the Fire Safe Council is becoming more difficult to go as, believe it or not, things become underfunded, and the number of applicants is going up. A good example of that is that one of the main sources of funding for the Fire Safe Council has been what's called the state fire assistance grants, which is through the USDA and then through the Grants Manager at the California Fire Safe Council. In the, with the last grant we worked off of last year, that was applied for in 2016, at that time, the funding was about three and a half million for that pool, and it was actually undersubscribed. There was money left over, which we got another hundred thousand of, but there weren't even enough applicants to tap the whole pool. The last round we participated in last year, the pool had gone down to 1.5 million, and the number of applicants had quadrupled, resulting in no more than 9% of applicants being funded, which of course means 91% of the applicants goes hungry. So that is not, that is not improving at all out there, in fact, it's getting worse. We had planned to apply for a CAL FIRE grant, which I'll explain briefly, coming up, but that one, the state took the money, so they're not ready to do that until next year. And so this regular ongoing program, which has been here for a long time, is not even up for this, up now. Next slide, please. Okay, we've always talked about the increase in, the reality of increasing threat of wildfire, but who would have expected this last, this year, and what has happened? We thought it would, couldn't get any worse than the Thomas Fire, and what we saw in 2017 and 2018, but here we are. One shocking statistics is that the number of wildfires have increased in frequency by 400% since 1970. So this is, this is something new, we now have a year, year-round fire season, and it's not going away, which means that our level of community preparedness and capacity and resilience must adapt to this. Next slide, please. As we have discussed before, wildfire is inevitable, we have a fire-dependent ecosystem around us, only a very small percentage, something less than 5% of those fires are deemed uncontrollable, but it's those uncontrollable fires that cause 95% of the damage. And in those uncontrollable fires, as you can tell by their name, that the public safety agencies are almost instantly overwhelmed, and a much greater level of community response is required to deal with, prepare for, respond during, and recover from such catastrophic fires. And that includes other kinds of disasters as well, including one we can see at any time, of course, which is an earthquake. And our risk management strategy, which we embarked on last year, is based upon, on that, on this set of facts right here. Next slide, please. As you know, we worked on a roadmap, which was completed but yet to be posted, as we're kind of fine tuning it, but we had goals for this wildfire risk mitigation strategy, and just look at that very quickly, obviously, empower the community, protect our values, that was in part determined by our public survey, leverage existing capacities, build a whole community capacities, this is from the bottom up, develop a culture of resiliency, which quite frankly is something you can do, it's like a culture of safety, and then become what is known as a fire-adapted community, because we need to learn to coexist with fire. Something about the leverage we're already doing, we've been doing it all along, but that, our capacity to leverage has, from the community, has gone up. In the last SFA grant we had, which we'd completed and funded in part the roadmap, 100% match is required for that grant, we turned in a 350% match, so we are increasing our capacity to leverage existing capacities. Next slide, please. So out of, out of the working group and discussions with lots of people, lots of stakeholders, working with the public survey, we have come up with these issues and concerns that the community has expressed. As we know, emergency communications of the public need to be improved, particularly in those first critical three hours, again, we're talking about a catastrophic fire, evacuation improvements, which includes more options in terms of shelter in place, temporary refuge areas, timing, things like that, a loss of power to critical facilities, that's, all these are, you know, a whole presentation in themselves. Vulnerable populations, we have a very, we have a high number of elderly and low income and AFN people, access and functional needs people, and Spanish-speaking people that are particularly vulnerable, that we have to improve our emergency planning, it has to be much more comprehensive and expanded, and of course, increase our community capacity, which is the whole goal here. Next slide, please. Coming out of the roadmap has been a number of projects, some of which you've already heard about, with the community supported grazing program, we got a setback on that early on because of the shutdown, go figure, but we are now picking that back up again and making strides in that, and we plan to launch that program for the next fire season next year. This is, goes to the mapping thing we talked about last, last, last meeting, and that was that the CAL FIRE severity zone maps are, provide very little use for local risk management planning, and much more fine-scale risk mapping is required. So we had intended to apply to CAL FIRE in collaboration with the Ventura County Fire Protection District to do this, and possibly other Fire Safe Councils in the county, but that's the grant that has now been postponed till next year, because the money was taken by the state. Want to, we looked at improving public emergency communications, we have a pending National Science Foundation grant, some of you have seen that, the city has joined as a collaborator in that, James, you've seen the, the application for that, it's a two-stage grant, the first one being a planning grant, and we should know about that in November, we're partnered with UCSB and USGS on that. We've talked a great deal about structural hardening, but that needs to be much more widespread and comprehensive. A pending grant we have, we know about it any day now, will pay for a large amount of volunteer training for structural ignition assessments, and then we will do some initial targeted assessments, assuming we get that grant or other funding, and then we're working with our private industry partner on data collection and management, so that can be used to inform us on how to prioritize structural hardening in our area, and provide a database for, for more sophisticated grant writing. And then we've also talked in the past about the community microgrid, that is sort of on hold, just because every, we had sought stimulus money from the state on this, and many of these, and that was making good progress through I-Bank and the Treasurer's Office, but that was frozen with the shutdown, that was the Climate Catalyst Fund, which was taken by the state, so that's off the table until next year, in terms of that source of funding. And then we had a variety of assessments that we wanted to do, and we're still looking for that, and we're also working with a variety of organizations, and the Department of Insurance, and in particular, the United Policyholders down in San Diego, looking at how to tie hardening and standards of fire clearance and prep to, with the insurance companies, to have them reward and incentivize those kinds of things. In fact, there is a virtual investigation, investigatory meeting in October that we will be attending with the California Department of Insurance. And then finally, we have a 2010 Community Wildfire Protection Plan that was prepared by the, this Fire Safe Council. The Central Ventura County Fire Safe Council has initiated with us a update of that, they have a grant pending on that, which includes us, but a lot of what the roadmap is doing is what we will, they're going to be wanting to use as guiding this update, and this is a county-wide community wildfire protection plan, and everything you see here will move into that upgrade. Okay, next slide, please. Of course, we are continuing as best we can through the, through the shutdown, our ongoing work we've been doing all this time, finalize the roadmap, working on this strategy, working on vegetation management, defensible space, and public education, something we've been doing for 20 years. Next slide. So what's required to reach these goals? Obviously, what is, we have discussed, that the plan needs from the bottom up, a purposeful, community-focused, community-driven, holistic, inclusive, and long-term planning and funding, that's what it takes to do this. That in turn requires a consistent baseline funding, apart from grants and donations. Now, historically, the Fire Safe Council has only worked off of grants, and has never actually had a fundraising program of its own, outside of the grant writing, but as I've described, discussed earlier, those grants are becoming actually more difficult to get. Also, grants are project-specific, intermittent, uncertain, and always short-term, and the bigger grants we're looking at, the more sophisticated funding, is going to require shovel-ready projects, which mean there has to be development money there beforehand, such as permitting and design and things like that. And I will say that, hold on for a second. Some of these programs that we're doing, these projects, they can become funded otherwise through the public, the community-supported grazing program is a great example, but that still requires, because the community was supporting the contracts to go out and graze these key areas for fuel reduction and vegetation management, but it still requires somebody to sit there and do the continual fundraising and management of that program. But ultimately, in many ways, that kind of program can become self-sustaining, but for the most part, there needs to be some consistent baseline funding. Next slide, please. Now, of course, we had placed our hopes, to some degree, and I think the city had as well, on Measure C, which is, we know, was successfully passed, but apparently, right now, that's not exactly a going concern, but hopefully that will return, and that, and that'll provide this funding. Another thing I've been looking at is to look at possibly following Marin County's lead, and I'm introducing this for the first time, and what Marin County did was they first passed a, a very specific wildland urban interface ordinance that affected existing structures to some degree, and substantial remodels and new construction. Then they formed, was what they called a Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and that was by a joint powers, exercise of powers agreement between 17 member agencies, which was the county, cities, towns, special districts. And then they, just in March, passed their Measure C, which was a parcel tax, was passed by over 73% support, that allows up to 10 cents per square foot for improved commercial and residential, then on unimproved things based on acreage, and then there were exemptions involved. There was independent community oversight of the, of the funding, no unfunded liabilities, 10% admin cap, and that launched in July of this year, their fiscal year is July 1 to June 30, and the anticipated revenue from that parcel tax is 9.3 million, and they, and Marin's a pretty good, pretty small county, it's only 260,000 people, so I'm taking a long look at that, in fact, it's interesting, one of the, one of our project directors on coal on the grazing program, one of her shepherds, shepherds, her father is on the Marin Wildfire Protection Authority, so he's coming to town, and we're going to meet and talk about this, but it is just an example of what we can do. What I want to do is prepare a much more expanded discussion memo on something like this, and then be able to share that with the council at a later date when that's ready. But it is something where we have to begin to address, that we need to have this, this, this baseline funding, and that was even stated in the measure itself, that what Marin County and Marin Fire Safe County, which led this, has understood for a long time, that without a long-term cooperative, well-funded effort, that the, the meaningful reductions of hazards and effective risk mitigation is just not, it's not possible, you just can't do this with grants here and there and stuff like that. It has to be something this, this community commits to, but I think we have a plan and a platform that could really make this work well. So, next slide, please. And with that, more information, that's for the other people, and I'm ready for any questions that anybody might have.
Okay, I have a question for you, Chris, the Marin County setup, do they have a fire protection district up there?
Fire protection district, well, there's an, unlike, unlike Ventura County, they have a number of special fire protection districts, so out of those 17 members, there's six fire protection districts, so there are members of the, of the Marin Authority.
Okay, so there are several of those, and then there, there are a number of municipal fire departments?
Actually, no municipal fire departments, I can actually tell you who is on the thing right here.
No, that's okay.
But, what it is, is the, it's the county itself, I'm assuming for the unincorporated areas, that it is city, cities, and they include towns, so unincorporated towns, I don't know how they describe that, I've read the ordinance, but they actually didn't describe that very well, and then there are the six fire protection districts, and there's two community services districts, that constitutes the 17 members, so each one under their Measure C gave the right for them to place the parcel tax within their jurisdictional boundaries.
Okay, so...
And it was, it was overwhelmingly approved by the voters, and it's ongoing. And I don't know, I mean, I've been speaking with Central Ventura Fire Safe Council to see if, you know, what do we want to do about, you discuss this as a county-wide effort, or start local, or whatever, as you just said, discussion, but I'm going to think about it, I want to put together a detailed memo, and then, actually, I would like to present that to, to the council.
Okay, Bill?
Chris, following up with that directly, you know, we have ample precedent for treating the, the Ohi Valley as a separate entity for various purposes, beginning with the, the Ohi Area Plan that is going to continue in the county's updated general plan. You know, what I'm trying to say is, I think if you're trying to put together a proposal that's going to be supported, I would think that focusing on an Ohi Valley fire protection, far-safe area, it's going to work a lot more than trying to make it county-wide, in my opinion.
Well, I'm actually really glad to hear that, because I'd rather do it that way. You know, I, I mean, our, our focus is the Ohi Valley area for the council, that's our focus as, as leaders in this, in this thing.
And it's a special topography.
Randy has his head up.
Yes, that's true.
And real quick, also, there's...
Bill, Randy has his head up, but I'll come back to you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Johnny. You know, Chris, it's interesting, I, first of all, I remember the December conversation, and I was extremely excited, and if I could have figured out how to convince everyone to fund you then, I would have. But, but I'm going to take a different approach than Bill's, because I think something like this, I, I see your group the same way that I look at the Green Coalition, they're representing a lot of people and a lot of interests, and could never get funded. You know, what little money that we gave them on an annual basis, the county wouldn't give them any money, and they were representing just as many people in the county as there were the city. I'd be very interested to sit down with you, and with Bab, and a couple other people, and actually talk about what it would take to create something for the city of Ohi only, and, and, and start from that premise, that what could we do, because again, I don't think we'd be interested in spending Measure C money on county property or county areas, that's just my take, it's, and it's, it's just my opinion only, it's not anyone else's, but if we could create something that's within the city, that captures the city problems and concerns and needs, I'd be more than interested to sit down and figure that out. And I think that's what Bab presented to us at the last council session, I've received other letters from other concerned citizens regarding the same thing, what can we do to harden our own community off without getting caught up in trying to harden everyone else off? I think our concerns are ours, and if we can set an example as to how to do it, it would make it easier to take it outside of, of our city into the sphere of influences in the Ohi Valley. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Bill, I promise, and then I'm going to go to Susan.
Okay, really, really quick, Chris, and, and to speak to your point, Randy, you know, when we talk about agricultural wetted areas as, as areas to help protect us for fire resiliency, that's inherently county and not city, so I agree with you as a start, but we, there's also, it's going to be very hard to separate with the city lines. Chris, the other comment I wanted to make is there's a lot of overlap, I believe, between fire resiliency and water resiliency.
Yes, we agree.
For example, we're talking about a rundo removal, which is a fire risk and a water depletion. Agricultural wetted areas, if we develop agreements for handling, you know, solutions to the adjudication that disproportionately affect ag, we could have the unintended consequences of encouraging fallow areas that, that take those, those wetted ag areas out, so if, please stay in touch with us on the sort of, especially the higher-level information that you develop, because there are a lot of overlaps.
We understand, and, and, obviously, I don't want to speak, but I do want to go to the point where, and I think the point you're making, Bill, as opposed to what Randy says, I agree that there are things, there are things to do within the city, hardening, of course, is structural hardening, and how we do that is very important, but the threats to the Ohi City is outside the city limits as well, so we, there is a sphere that we have to deal with if we want to protect the city, so how we divide that up, and how we maintain the funding within that area, the Ohi Valley plant area, then that's what we, that we have to do, but we do have to address things outside the city limit to protect the city.
Yeah.
Okay, Susan?
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say, the vulnerable areas are outside of the city, it seems to me that a fire within the city, most of those, if it starts in the city, can be handled by a fire department, and as we saw, we're, as you like to say, Mayor Johnny, we're the donut, we're the hole in the donut, and we are much, much safer and less vulnerable than the surrounding area, it's, it's impossible to set, separate the city from the unincorporated area, is my feeling.
Right, but we have to remember, we have a fire protection district that has responsibility and mutual aid agreements for those areas around us, we need to be sure that if it gets into the city, any fire marshal will tell you, that the real intensity, when you see these horrible pictures, these tragic pictures on TV, it's once it gets into a built-up area, it is the man-made built structures that are the problem, they burn much hotter than does the chaperone, so it is a difficult thing to try to figure out how to do it, but parcel tax is certainly one that is based on something that's an allocated, you know, benefits allocation based on value. Do you have any other hands on this? Chris, did you have something else you wanted to add?
I just, I didn't want to say that, yes, the idea of, of, you know, because we, by some luck, I suppose, missed the fate of Paradise, which just was evacuated again, by the way, we have people from Ohi whose house burned down in Paradise, rebuilt it, just, and moved up there just to get it evacuated again. So what, what Mayor Johnston said is absolutely correct, and that is, is that what levels of community is house-to-house ignition, but what starts the first house going is not direct flames, because if, 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 that's rare, I mean, it can be the cause, but it's rarely the cause.
Ember.
I mean, I mean, from the actual burning vegetation, I mean, that's why you have 100 feet of desensitable space, because 100 feet will cut off the radiant, radiant barrier of that heat from open flame of vegetation. What burns it down is the ember casts, the fire brands, and those can come like an Thomas Fire from over a mile away. So, so hardening our community is actually, in our, by the Fire Safe Council's saying, that's one of the absolute priorities, because you matter what we do, you know, as the vegetation grows back, and we want a healthy chaperone watershed up there, then we're going to have ember cast in such a storm again, such a firestorm again. So what we do in the city limits and for our structures is of utmost importance, but as we know, that takes a lot of data, then it takes money, and politics, and everything else to get that done, so, but the programs that we've outlined, outlined here are to build that, understanding that database, and to train the people to do the assessments, and then we can take the next step of looking at how do we fund people in various tiered fashions to get this done, and we can do that through prioritizing and tiering what we do to people, but that takes a long, that takes a coordinated funded effort to do that.
Okay, well, thank you very much for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time you've taken, okay.
And I will, and I will be in touch, because obviously, this is something to discuss directly with you people. I understand that to be the case.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Yep, you have a question, Susan?
It's just to the, to everyone, we've had a number of public comments about not allowing people to have fires on their property, and I've had calls from people whose neighbor are, are burning a large, barely unattended fire near their...
Okay, well, that's a topic for...
But I thought for the public, let's seize the moment, because it's so important, James said that there is, that the public can do something about... James said that there is, that the public can do something about that it's illegal.
Yes.
It's so important. We should seize the moment.
In that, okay, I agree, and we can do that under council reports and announcements at the end of the meeting. Chris, thank you for coming.
Wait, Mayor Johnny?
Suzie, Suzie, Suzie.
You're mistaken. It's a public comment. We're at 7:30, and it's a public comment.
Suzie, if you will stop, I will then go to public comments. Okay, Chris, thank you for coming.
Good evening, everybody.
Moved out the agenda. Thank you. Okay. So we are now at, we're even, yeah, one minute past, but I'm going to credit you with the minutes, Suzie. Okay, it's 7:30. It's public comment time. And I have cards from three people that I don't think is specifically what you were talking about, but it may get blended into that. I think we have the mavens. With River, are you out there? Gail?
Yes, I am.
Okay. We're ready for the public comments, and I think River Saponoff is the first one up.
Yeah, hi there.
Hi.
I don't, can you guys see me? Or is this just on?
We can hear you. It looks like you're showing an image from Game of Thrones.
Yeah, this is my, actually, my goddaughter's Zoom account that I use, so I don't know why it's not showing me. But anyway, I had sent a letter to the city manager, and to the Arts Council, and to you guys, the City Council, about proposing to have our Ohi Day Mandala in a modified form this year. And we feel that we could, we looked at the park, we sent, I sent the email with a kind of a very rough sketch. Did you guys get that?
I got it.
Okay, okay. And so we're proposing of doing it socially distanced. And we would like to be able to use the supplies that we already have. We would not need to purchase any more supplies or tools. We have them all in the storage shed at the Boyd Center, which is usually where we go. We would just need some help. Usually, we get the, one of the city vans transports it to us. And we would like to do it around the fountain and down the walkways, and we would connect it all so that it would be cohesive. We think that would bring a lot of joy and happiness in a time that's very challenging for us. And just, and we are proposing doing it Monday through Thursday during the week, so that we have mostly locals. And the weekend seemed to be very busy with tourists who might not be engaged in our community in a way that they would be following the instructions. And we would like to, so we're proposing to do it for full days, the first two days, and then partial days, the second two days, where we would be there in the afternoon, so the children, when they get off of school, could come over and paint. And so we would probably talk to Tiffany Wors, if you guys okay us to let the children know that we're doing that. And we did, I did put a little proposal there, if we could have an honorarium, if that would be able to be put in the budget, because we all are, we're all working women. And, but we don't want that to get in the way of us being able to bring this into the community. So I want to ask you to consider it. This would be our, this is our 28th year. And it's interesting, because if you, you know, go by numerology, which I just love to look at numbers and stuff, you know, that's a one year, two eight is ten, which is a one year. So it's a new beginning and something new.
Thank you, River.
Yep.
Okay. Next, we have Patricia. Is it Pagaleen? Is that the right pronunciation?
Suzie has her hand up, Mayor.
Yeah.
Suzie.
I'm going to mute myself now. Can you see me? Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Patty.
Hi. Well, anyway, hello, everybody. I'm really glad to see that you all are looking like you're staying healthy during this really strange time. And I want to thank you for all your efforts to protect the health of the Ohi residents and to keep the city running as smoothly as possible. Regarding the Middle Stewart Creek Canyon restoration project, I understand that the goal is to replace non-native trees and bushes with native species. However, I'm really concerned, as are many of us, concerned with the use of herbicides, and as well as the disruption of habitat due to the tree removal. So with all of the crazy, you know, what we're dealing with COVID-19, it's really highlighted how critically important our outdoor space and parks are. And we really object to the use of any kind of herbicides in this project. The health of the wildlife, the pets, the people, and the soil are all negatively affected when exposed to glyphosate. I did send you all an email with information, if you take the time to look at it. Towns around the country are taking steps to ban glyphosate and other harmful pesticides. And the organization Nontoxic Neighborhoods has a webinar, How to Ban Glyphosate in Your City, with Dr. Zach Bush, and I sent you all that link. I would really appreciate it if you'd take the time to watch that. So please keep in mind that glyphosate since July 2017 has been listed as known to the state of California to cause cancer. I sent information to you regarding that. I'm sure you're all aware that there have been huge amounts of money paid out. There was a New York Times article about Roundup, the Roundup maker to pay $10 billion to settle cancer lawsuits. Another reason not to use glyphosate is that the Western monarchs have declined by over 99%. And a key factor in their decline is glyphosate. So we're asking you to take a pause and reconsider your approval for this project, to make sure that they do not use herbicides, that the herbicides are not allowed. So please protect the health of the land, the water, the wildlife, people, and pets in Ohi. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Patricia. Okay, Suzie, you had something you wanted to say. Suzie?
Patricia, if you're, Patty, if you're still on the line, or you'll hear about it.
Yeah.
We're going to be discussing, we're pulling item I, which is on the Stewart Canyon project. If you want to stay on and listen to our discussion, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
In response to that, is it my turn now, Mayor, to talk about the fire comments?
No, we're doing public comment, aren't we?
Yeah, that's what, we had at least three public comments about asking us to immediately outlaw any open fires. The reason it's awkward is because.
Just a minute. Suzie, are you making a public comment?
No, but the people kept, we don't have, we're in a Zoom meeting, and not everyone knows how to access, I guess.
Well, could you wait until it is your turn, then? Okay, we're doing public comment, and I will call on you to make an announcement, okay? Mary Kennedy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Hi, I'm with the Mandala mavens, River, Evergreen, and myself. My name is Mary Kennedy. I live in Ohi. I think River said it best, the proposal, we really want to do a mandala, because we have no Ohi Day happening this year. And the mandala is painted with water-based tempera paints. We plan to paint around the fountain in Libby Park, and we'd like if the mandala could last until the rains wash it away, or until it gets, you know, worn away. We're kind of proposing a big bouquet of flowers, something happy from all of the, it's been a crappy year. Something to boost people's spirits, just like Ohi Day does when we have it. Let's see, I'm just picking up with, you know, things that I'm trying to think that, you know, River covered most of it. But basically, right now, we need permission. There's a lot of work involved for us to do before the date comes. And again, I think we're planning on October 19th through the 23rd. So if we can get a green light from the city, that it's okay to use the space, we can start our planning. We need to mix paint. We need to do a lot of things. So just, you know, if it's a go with the city, then, you know, then we can begin, or that you guys need to, you know, discuss logistics of those things also. Again, we do plan to, you know, abide by all the COVID restrictions of social distancing. And the things that we have planned can easily keep people distanced apart and things like that. So, yeah, it's a fun project. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, that's all the public comments. Now, Suzie, you have an announcement you wanted to make for the benefit of the public about the rules on outdoor fires? Is that what you're?
No, well, yes. But the point is that we received at least three public comments from people who are concerned about outdoor fires. And I've also received, you know, personal messages from their neighbors burning an open fire. And so I wanted to, while we were on the topic of fire, I wanted to ask James to explain to the public what the regulations are about open fires during this high-risk fire season, or all year long, actually.
Okay, well, the fact that we had someone do a presentation on fire didn't change our agenda to, this is not a topic. And I'm sure James will be able to do that, or we can do that at the end of the meeting. But it is not a new thing, so I'm not quite understanding why you're insisting at this point in the agenda that we do this.
What I'm trying to, I'm trying to represent the public who is not able to make their comments behind the podium.
Why have they not sent the comments to the.
We have them. We receive them this afternoon at 5 o'clock.
Well, that's not what's on my.
Yes, we have them. I have them here in front of me.
I think there's one, or two comments, well, one comment about fire from Michael Eswanick, I think.
Yes, and also from Betsy Watson, Teramina.
Okay, well, first, let's go to the staff. James, do you have public comments? I received a sheet from the clerk, and I don't have what you have, apparently.
Okay, yeah, apologies for that. We do have, we do have a few public comments. I'll just read the name and the subject. They have been provided to the council, and we'll resend it to make sure that they've gone to you. One was from, one was from Leonard Clay regarding pickleball, which is not on the agenda tonight, but that comment's been provided to you. Russell Sidney wrote a comment letter, but it's regarding consent item I, supporting that project for fire prevention. Michael Eswanick sent a public comment about Ohi needing a law outlawing open fires. And to that point, I can keep it very brief. The city code, Article 2, Section 3-4.201, requires a permit for any open fire. So if you, if anybody witnesses an open fire, they can call either the city's code compliance, or if it's outside of hours, non-emergency PD, or I guess depending on the fire, you know, even emergency PD maybe called it at some point. But that can be called in. To my knowledge, we haven't received any calls, so.
Would you repeat that for the public in case anybody's listening to that number?
Yeah, so our city code requires a permit to ignite or burn in the open air any open, exposed, or outdoor combustible waste material. And there's more to it than that. But it's Article 2, Section 3-4.201 of our city code. And so it's available online, but again, call the city's code compliance or the non-emergency PD if somebody is, you know, starting a fire and you witness it. So that was that one. We also have a comment about small wireless facilities, but we'll mention that at that time. And two comments about small wireless facilities that we'll mention at that time. So those are the public comments we.
Suzie, do you have others that were submitted that we somehow didn't get to me?
Well, embedded in here is a comment in the letter that James mentioned. There's a comment from Betsy Watson. She said there were four fires at the Meadow Preserve, a total of four. So I'd like to fact-check that, that someone's starting fires there or whatever.
That's arson, I would think, or.
Yeah. Call the police if you witnessed that. I have not heard that other than that comment. The chief is probably in council chambers. I was trying to do it for my office for technical reasons. So we could ask the chief if there have been any reported incidences of arson. I don't know, Gail, Deputy Clerk Gail, you're probably in there with the chief. Are you able to ask him that?
Here he comes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. There were some reported, I'm not going to even say arson, but there were some reported fires, a very small area in the preserve. I believe there was a couple cases that were reported to the PD, and we responded out to that. But I'm also hearing there were a couple other incidents that occurred, but it looks like they were not reported to police, but probably to the fire department, and they were handled by them. And usually, if there's a fire that, like in an area like that, fire department will go out, do an investigation if there is any evidence of an arson or anything like that versus accidental. They will, they have fire arson investigators that can respond, as well as notify the police department, where we can get a deputy out there to also assist with the investigation.
Now, Suzie, are you thinking that people have gone out there to, you know, have a weenie roast, or camp, or something? Or is this just that they've had fires break out, and that the fire department has dealt with it? I think the public in general knows that you're not supposed to do that, but it's always good to remind them. So, okay. Okay. We are, what is it, item I, Bill? Are you at that point?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Sorry for the confusion, guys.
Apologies for that, thank you.
I pulled item I because, for a couple of reasons. The first being that the packet that I have includes the document for approval for the, with PAX Environmental and with the crew, that I do not see the document in the packet for item number one, PW 2020-02. And you know, I'm always reluctant to approve something that we don't have officially in the record. We have a description of PW 2020-02, but not the actual document. And we have a description, and so that's problem number one, I think. Problem number two is the description. Because it appears, and as in bit of context, both councilperson Francina and myself, and of course, we also received feedback from neighborhood, that I think our citizens are expecting, and certainly, councilperson Francina and I certainly saw the wisdom of including a level of discretion, a granular discretion, in the execution of this grant that appears by description to not be there. For example, the description on scope of page four of eight specifically says that the state licensed tree contractor to remove, and I emphasize, all large trees, trees greater than 24 inches in diameter, and any smaller trees requiring climbing. When there's been a fair amount of discussion that we want to have some discretion over the all-or-nothing approach. We certainly fully agree with the principles of this grant, but not necessarily removing all, when we don't know what all means. For example, does that, does that mean if it's on the edge of 100 feet from the stream bed, we necessarily, it's all? Or maybe that tree could be, you know, best left for other criteria other than just ecology, like neighborhood concerns, of neighbor concerns for habitat, community concerns for viewshed, et cetera. And then also more to the point of that as well, those are the most expensive removals. It doesn't appear that the discretion is built into the RFB. It also specifies that replants will only be. It also specifies that um, replants will only be one to five gallons in size, where we talked some degree about how a better outcome might be to forego very selectively some of the large trees far away from the stream bed and free up funds for larger specimens that would have a higher degree of survivability and and quicker um, restoration overall. Also, for example, the um, the the crew uh, agreement talks about monitoring for non-native regrowth on a long-term basis, but doesn't specify who actually pulls the weeds, um, if you're, they're identified. So I guess what I'm trying to say is is uh, I think it's, I I thought we were gonna have some granular discretion here. There was some granularity in terms of executing this grant, and I wouldn't want to have any uh, exercise of that discretion trigger change order. The flexibility should be built into the RFP. And I don't have the document to be assured about that, and so it's very difficult for me to vote yes on something that isn't explicit on those major points. Those are my concerns.
Susie?
Well, I want to express my uh, support for Bill's comments. Bill and I spent considerable time, both with the neighbors that are will be directly impacted by the project. And then a second time, we walked the land with James and Greg Grant. And every time that I walk the land or the creek bed, you know, my understanding of the project it improved and it's, you know, and I felt, I feel like we still need to do more outreach to educate the public what this is about. Um, and I know we've tried. James wrote a great press release. But the first thing that, when I saw this on the consent calendar, I couldn't understand why something that's this um, of this magnitude and so important to the community and the future of Ojai, why it would be on the consent as a consent item when we've had so much, we have, you know, a stack of letters from the neighbors with excellent feedback and things to to discuss and consider. I don't know where to go with this. Because um, but and also like Patty Pagelin expressed her concern about the use of pesticides. And the uh, lead, the biologist or whatever his title is, Tom Scott Tompkins, he explained to us that the that the use of pesticide, that what the only pesticide.
Are you, do you mean herbicides?
Herbicide is, you know, it's something that he needs to explain to the public because of my understanding, when he explained it was that it won't um, it won't, it will, it will kill the the tree trunk and help me out, Bill, if you can, but it won't spread into the water or or affect wildlife or anything like that. And that's the sort of thing that the public needs to understand. And I don't have the biol, you know, the background to explain it. And um, I wish that he was here to explain it to the, explain things to the public. The public still has a lot of questions about the project. That, you know, I don't know what the next step is, but um, it need, you know, we need to approach this thoughtfully so that people understand and support the project.
Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just, I I think the main point here, I think that Susan and I are both trying to make, is we want to be assured that the request for bids doesn't preclude the kind of granular flexibility to address community concerns, that we're not delegating. So when I see the description being all, that seems to be delegating that flexibility. And we've got to have that in there for for my vote yes. And, you know, we, that has to be um, still there. I'm willing to go forward with this when I'm, I can be assured that flexibility is there. And it's going to be responsive to community concerns. Um, and that we can, we can make the kind of high-level trade-offs in in service to the overall goals here and not be uh, having to come back and say, oh, well, if we make that adjustments, it's a change order. Now, that flexibility should be built into the bid.
Well, a question for the city manager. Uh, what is the length of time for advertising the bid?
Yeah, I, so I have uh, the Public Works Director on the uh, call because he has been working with the biologist on the request for bids over the last couple of days. So he uh, he would be able to answer that question.
The reason of my question is, is is there time for us, when one says all, that is an obligation of the uh, the person submitting the bid, uh, to pull back on that and to be able to say, well, we don't want this done. If we've got a period of time to do that, uh, and we've just got a uh, a blanket responsibility, we can, uh, before we award the bid, we could make some of these adjustments that seem like maybe might need to be made. On the other hand, maybe by the time we all get educated, maybe it's fine. It's just a matter of communicating with the public. Uh, Randy?
Is, James, is there environmentalist biologist uh, included in this package that the entities that were agreeing to this contract with or that will be bidding on it, um, have some form of supervision on site? It seems like the concern that I'm hearing is that our staff doesn't have the biological background to make determinations or sound determinations um, on this project. So the question is, in the bidding process, can we include the fact that there'll be a biologist or an environmentalist on site helping coordinate um, and interact with the agencies that are contracted as well as the public, as well as the council?
Yeah, yes, the biologist that uh, Councilmember Francina and Councilmember Wirek mentioned is part of this project.
Then we have one on, then we have one.
Yeah, that's part of the package, uh, item number three.
Then, Bill, what's your concern if we have a biologist that he can't make the right um discretionary determinations to move this project forward?
Because I do not want to, uh, we have a responsibility to address community concerns and not delegate that to a biologist who may have concerns that don't necessarily align perfectly with the community and with uh, in terms of making certain trade-offs like um, uh, certain uh, expensive trees to remove versus uh, size of plants to be uh, for their replacement. In other words, I don't think this is something that uh, on a policy level that can be completely delegated to a professional biologist, but that that's critical information. But it's critical, it's information that has to be incorporated into overall judgment.
Uh, uh, again, I'm, I'm, I think your, I think your concerns are valid. I think both Susie and your concerns are valid. I'm just trying to figure out how to move this project forward. The other thing is if we have.
Just have flexibility, just have flexibility built into the bid.
If we, if we have a biologist on on staff and on site, is there any, is there anything that we could write into the wording that they uh, uh, prior to proceeding, that they write a plan of production that is reviewed by council, or does that slow the process down? Um, or does that help Bill and Susie mitigate their concerns and issues? So if you, who's ever doing the first large tree removal or small tree removal or whatever they're doing, that they submit something to us prior to them moving forward. Um, we can post that, and if we have concerns, we deal with it. If we don't, we let, we let the experts do what they're supposed to do.
I I agree, and as long as we have that ability in there, that it doesn't say, oh, if we do that, it's change orders. You know, as long as that flexibility is built into the process, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Do I understand correctly, Mr. City Manager, that the objective of this particular uh, project or grant is to uh, improve the uh, water situation by not having all this, uh, you know, the uh, vegetation uh, consuming and what they call it, transpiration or whatever, uh, pulling the water out of the creek. At the same time, it's removing the fire uh, hazards that are there, is that right?
Yes, and restoring habitat as well. Those are the three main goals.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna have a problem of getting this done. I hope it doesn't take five years like the thing out on the highway, the ATP grant. Uh, both water and fire are reasonably urgent, so it seems to me we got to be able to maybe parallel these things and not hold one up for the other. I thought that's what Randy's getting at, I think.
And and I want to proceed. I just want to make sure that granular flexibility is in there. And and right now, the description doesn't say that.
Okay, well, did we, is this, did you say the Public Works Director is available to verify that that there would be latitude? If not, maybe carry it over for two weeks.
Yeah, and uh, you know, I know he's been working on this the last couple of days and uh, we we didn't have a chance to check in before the meeting. So if uh, Mr. Grant, it looks like you're on the call, if you can update us.
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, right, I did want to address that. I'm sorry, uh, well, the text in the administrative report that says all. The intention of that was that the CCC, the California Conservation Corps, and the crew will not be doing any large trees. That's all, the large trees are being handled by the contractor. And it was the intention originally to remove all trees, but I know there's been a lot of discussion with the Councilman Wirek and and Francina with some of the neighboring properties. And we do have flexibility. I want to assure you with that, that it says the larger trees, the twenty-four inch plus trees would be removed by the contractor, but we have flexibility. The bid form uh, has the number, the total number of large trees, but built into that is flexibility for plus or minus twenty-five percent or even more. So there's, for instance, there's uh, forty large trees, so twenty-five percent, we could add or subtract up to ten of those trees. So that would give us plenty of flexibility. And that that discretion is by the city. The city is directing and managing this project, supervising it. The biologist monitoring is intended to monitor things like the stream habitat, the uh, nesting birds, to make sure there's no nesting birds near the trees. And that uh, the trees that are protected uh, are properly protected. There's certain uh, restrictions in the tree management plan that protects the trees and so on. So uh, the, I just want to assure you, there is plenty of flexibility on that, and I think it's already been discussed at uh, internally uh, here, that uh, our our priority would be close to the stream bed. And further from the stream bed, especially up in the northern area, where we've got uh, some visual impacts with some of the neighbors. We're looking at uh, leaving some of those trees or some of the other suggestions for try to plant trees early. I think one of the uh, people were really seeing if we couldn't plant trees in immediately or simultaneously as the trees were moved to try to get those growing. For instance, sycamores, I think we all know, grow pretty quickly when we get water on them. So I think those were a few of the areas you were talking about. The biggest thing will be if we get this request for bid in below budget, we have flexibility to move that line out of money to other areas where we can help supplement the project.
Greg, how long is the advertising uh, for the bid?
Uh, it's approximately thirty days.
Okay, so if we were to approve this, then councilman, the the council members that have a concern with the granular level could meet with you uh, and express that and be assured that uh, what their concerns are are matching what you understand the bid to contain. Uh, because we don't have to award the bid if there's a a major discrepancy, but I think probably the staff and the biologist should be able to work with you on that and give you the comfort level. Uh, now, it doesn't address getting to the community. The community is going to have to pay attention to it. I know how all of us say we're listening, and then until it gets in our backyard, and then we get real concerned as to what they do. Even sometimes when you hire the tree trimmer yourself in your own yard, you should be careful and be there. Uh, Randy?
Mayor Ryan um, wanted to speak, and then I'll speak after Ryan.
Oh, okay. You, you, you're muted.
It's all right, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that um, getting back to Greg, it's not the amount of trees and having the plus and minus of twenty-five percent. I think the concern is the when, the where, and the how. So in other words, um, you know, when you go to the thinning, we're just not gonna uh, um, just start chopping down trees in the middle of of the waterway, um, early, nearly, I think, I think. I think the suggestion here is um, that we do this thinning process in a logical and um, professional and ecological manner, so as we're not just falling trees and destroying um, everything that that we're trying to accomplish. You know, again, um, thinning here, thinning there, I I don't know why we can't have some form of a plan. I don't necessarily know if it has to come back to council, but I would think Greg Grant would would want something um, in writing, so if there was a concern, he could then um, pass it on and educate it to the public. Or if there was a concern after something drastically happened, that he could bring back to council what the plan was and what the failure of the plan was. So I I I understand the concerns. I think my concern is the word granular, because it really sounds fine and small and um, you know, and that's, that to, that to me is micromanaging. Um, so those are just my thoughts.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I will add what I was gonna say, because Randy set it up too perfectly.
Okay.
The only thing I was gonna say is that the term granular flexibility is code word for micromanaging things so badly it never gets done. And when I hear granular flexibility, that sounds like a euphemism for destroying the project by being a overly sensitive to so many things. This has been on the books for a long time. We have professionals involved. We have multiple opportunities to get public input. I'm glad that now that we've gotten this to this far, we're getting some direct public input. But the idea that we're gonna build in like councilmembers standing in the area in the back, while the experts are there telling us which trees need to be, need to be removed after it's already been decided, is a little much. Like, I am very concerned that the we, we can't ask every contractor to bid contracts with non-change items just all conditioned on what we decide later on. We've seen that with ATP. We've seen it in the history of the city for a decade, for multiple decades. This ends up being where we get stalled out and not get a good result. And I absolutely want to incorporate the public input that's there, but I don't want to get carried away with granular flexibility.
Okay, do you have a motion? It sounds like you're ready for one.
Well, I I don't have a motion. I just want to comment on the granular flexibility problem.
Okay, well, I would make the motion that we approve what has been submitted if our understanding of the flexibility that Greg has given us is uh, we have a thirty-day period in order to check or verify that for those of us who are skeptical. Bill?
Uh, I'll, first, I'll second that, Mayor, and and in in service to the motion, I have a question for Mr. Grant. Is the planting plan for restoration effort going to be completed prior to the beginning removal of trees, or is that going to be ongoing during the removal of trees? Uh, in terms of the restoration plan?
Right, it'll be completed beforehand.
That'll be before.
That's part of the submitting through uh, the CDFW, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. There's an extensive biological assessment, planning plan, and so on, that's being reviewed and circulated with CDN up to right now.
And so I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with proceeding with this. But Ryan, I am going to take issue with you. We're elected officials expressing community concerns. We don't delegate that judgment to technocrats.
So.
Andy?
Yes, um. Just to respond, I like to get stuff done.
Okay, I'll give you a chance. I'll be right back to you for the debate. Go ahead, Randy.
Well, just to clarify, I would like Greg Grant to put this um, uh, this dialogue that we're having tonight in writing and to attach it to our council report coming back to us. Um, I, I get lost in the hearsay and I get lost in the, I'll get back to you. I want something in writing clearly stating Susie's and Bill's concerns and how they're gonna be handled or mitigated in the future.
Yeah.
Okay, it's uh, Ryan gets to say, and then I'll come to you. Uh, I'm pointing to screens. I'll then come to Susie.
Well, I'm not gonna direct my comments at a, at a direct council member. I don't appreciate that. But I do think that we have an ongoing problem of micromanaging the crap out of things, and now all of a sudden, the part of our city hall campus that has been neglected for decades and nobody has any attention on, all of a sudden has so much attention. We have a pond, pickleball, a climate park, we have this grant, we have so, and now all of those things that have been set in motion, now we're listening to everybody, and it sounds like a pinball going back and forth on how far away we are from figuring out what we need to do. We cannot look a gift horse in the mouth. There is such a difference between delegation and management. And I am not willing to overlook that this is an important space that we need to be protective of, and we need to get it right. But I also think that we are setting ourselves up for the same trap that this council and the city has fallen into so many times, that here we are with finally getting something moving, and it feels an awful lot like we are setting it up to be so micromanaged that it locks itself up and doesn't get a good result. And I hope we don't start that process now. This is something really positive that we're moving forward on with a lot of moving parts going on on our campus, and if we're going to treat everything like this back there and not rely on some of the volunteers, the experts, the donations and all those, I don't consider that a delegation. I consider that an appropriate level of incorporating the community's willingness to help us get something done, so we get it done. So I I I just want to lay that out.
All right, okay, thank you. Uh, we ready for, oh, Susie?
Oh, I just want assurance, Greg Grant, that you read um, the latest email from Michael Marino, which has uh, suggests three modifications and and um, focus areas for the project. which suggests three modifications and focus areas for the project. I thought, you know, his comments are so thoughtful. I just want to make sure that you saw that. And that's the sort of thing, it's not micromanaging. The neighbors that are there, they want to understand the project. They want to help. And they've made very good suggestions that we might not otherwise have had had the neighbors not been allowed to weigh in. They live there. They see the area all the time.
Greg, did you get that report or the comments? I saw it in the email. It was fairly thorough.
Yes, I did. I just wanted also to mention, we've met with the neighbors in that area several times, and I believe you have, and Councilman Wierich has as well. So we're really trying to address their comments. We're not ignoring those in any way.
Okay, very good.
May I finish? Ryan, I want to assure you that there's nothing that was said tonight that Bill and I are not already aware of. We share your concerns. And we've taken the time to educate ourselves about the project, and I think we deserve some credit for that.
Okay, that's, it always goes there. Okay, are we ready for a vote?
Mr. Summers has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Wierich. It's unclear when I'm on the screen. If I, one final legal comment. The discretion that is on the table here is included in the technical specifications in the request for bids that would become the technical specifications in the contract if that were to be approved as bid out by the council, namely requiring that for the specific plan for the trees to be removed to be determined by the Public Works Director and to include some, but not all, of the red gum and iron bark eucalyptus trees. So the contract does bake in that discretion, although I'm not sure why it wasn't in the packet packet.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have 30 days for those who still remain a little concerned or skeptical to contact the Public Works Director and get the granular level. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call on this one?
No, consensus is fine. Or actually, I scratched that. We're approving a fair amount of money as well.
Yeah, right, amounts, okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Tim Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thanks, guys. Okay, we are now on, we have a public hearing. Fences, walls, and hedges, okay? So I guess, Mr. City Manager, you want to introduce this? Before we open the hearing?
Yes, thank you. We have just a quick, brief presentation. As this issue stems several years back, so we just wanted to kind of restate where we are and how we got to this point. Currently, the city's current code has existing regulations for fences, walls, and hedges, which limit the height of fences, walls, and hedges to three feet in the front yard area. Fences and walls have a five-foot minimum setback from the public right-of-way. And setbacks for fences, walls, and hedges over three feet are based on the closest wall of the primary structure, meaning any fence wall or fence or wall that's over three feet high can only be built even with the primary structure. It can't be built in the front setback. And so that's kind of the current regulations for fences, walls, and hedges. There's currently no review or permitting process for fences, walls, or hedges. Chain link fencing is discouraged but not technically prohibited, and barbed wire and razor wire are omitted from the city code. So the City Council in 2018 directed the Planning Commission to review the requirements for fences, walls, and hedges and make recommendations. In early 2019, the Planning Commission reviewed and provided recommendations to the City Council, including the elimination of the five-foot setback for fences that are three feet or less in height, meaning that fences three feet or less could be built up to the property line. A recommendation to allow fences four feet in height if setback five feet or more from the property line. So after that five, initial five feet, you can go four feet in height is basically what they recommended. They also recommended requiring a five-foot setback for hedges and eliminating the three-foot height limit for hedges within the front yard setback. And then they also recommended establishing a minimal or no fee process for reviewing fences and walls in the front yard setback area. And the idea with that was having a written review, a written zone clearance, so that fences are reviewed in writing upfront and that both the city and residents are aware of what's approved. So that was presented to the City Council from Planning Commission in 2019. At that time, the City Council reviewed the Planning Commission recommendations and directed staff to draft an ordinance, which is the ordinance before you here today. The ordinance before you does the following. It creates the minimal fee zoning clearance to be reviewed by the Community Development Department, meaning a resident would come in and submit an application for a permit and in writing describe the fence. We recommended a reduced fee, a $50 fee, to be approved by resolution at an upcoming meeting. So if council agrees, we'll bring that back at the next council meeting to be adopted by resolution. So it'd be a $50 zone clearance to get a written approval from the city for any fence wall or hedge. What would be allowed in that process would be fences, walls, and hedges at the property line, up to three feet in height. Additionally, fences, walls, and hedges could be four feet in height, five feet back or further from the property line. So the first five feet, and we have an illustration coming up, but first five feet, you can go three feet high. After that, you could go four feet high. The ordinance also maintains the requirement that any taller fence than fence wall or hedge that's four feet or higher would be placed outside the front setback and even with the structure. It also clarifies that chain link fencing is not permitted, but provides for an opportunity to apply for a minor conditional use permit. And the same, or similar for barbed wire and razor wire, notes that those are not permitted unless a full conditional use permit is received. And then, lastly, it states that no fence shall exceed seven feet in height even with grade changes or changes in material type. And what that means is, you know, if somebody has a two-foot retaining wall, they can have a five-foot fence on top of it, but they can't exceed seven feet combined. And we have a couple of illustrations to illustrate a couple of these points. I know it's somewhat complicated, so we tried to simplify it here. You can see from this illustration, what's proposed is that the first three feet, I'm sorry, the first five feet setback from the property line, the fence, which is this yellow zone here, a fence could be, fence or wall could be three feet in height. And then, the rest of the front setback after five, the first five feet, can be four feet in height. And that would be up to the structure. And then from the structure back, they potentially could go higher. So that's what's being proposed with this ordinance.
James, quick question.
Yeah.
Because I knew, because you'd be on that slide. If that house faced to the west, wouldn't that, it would, those would both be fronts, and you would have to paint those two colors on both sides, correct?
The house faced to the west.
Since it's a corner lot and the narrow side is the south side, if, based on our code and our appeal last week or a couple of weeks ago, if that house faced to the west, the front door faced to the west, they would both be frontages, correct?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
So under this scheme, a house that faced to the west would have the same colors drawn on the street side setback as well?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And the intersection visibility area would be yellow, and then the same color would be drawn on the other side.
I thought there was a different definition of frontage than that.
I've had my hand up for about five minutes.
Well, you weren't on the camera. I'm sorry, I couldn't see your hand. Okay, Suze?
Well, if Bill got started, I can wait. Are you, okay, I'll take my turn.
No, my mistake.
Okay, I'm not muted, right? You can hear me.
We can hear you. Proceed, please.
I will not vote for this draft ordinance as is because it does not address the fact that many people like myself have a very small yard, and the five-foot setback would cut my, you know, eight-foot yard, it would eliminate it. The tree would be on the outside of my yard. And the reason for allowing, sorry, the four feet is so that my dog does not become a public nuisance. When I had a three-foot fence, my dog was always standing upright when a parade of people would come by. And once in a while, she, if she wanted to, she could jump over. And I know there are many, many other people in my position, which is one of the reasons why you see so many illegal fences in Ojai. One of the reasons people want a fence at all is not just for privacy and to mitigate the noise of traffic, it's to keep their dog secure in the yard. So I propose that we make a change to this draft ordinance. And I actually was under the impression that we had already made that change because I hired my handyman to put a very discreet one foot, you know, my little picket fence is now a foot higher. And ever since then, I've had peace of mind. My dog cannot jump over that little, that small increase in height. So that's what I want to address. Thank you.
Okay, Bill, you're next.
You're on mute.
Sorry, there we go. I clicked. I just want to, as, I would certainly be willing to vote for a modification that eliminated the differentiation of three to four feet in the front setback. I just want to express that willingness. If we could do four, that would be, I could live with that.
May I ask a question of Bill? Mayor?
We're not debating the, no, you can ask the question, but we need to open the public hearing at some point here. Okay, go ahead, Suze.
I can wait if there's public.
Is there, are there any questions of staff then at this point? Okay, if not, then I'm going to open the public hearing. And do we have any cards? I do not have a note that there are any cards on this one.
No cards.
No cards, okay. Is there anyone out there listening to me that wishes to be heard in the public hearing? If not, okay, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, Suze?
Okay, Bill, are you suggesting that, you know, you're a little bit familiar with my small front yard? If, are you saying that I could not have my four-foot fence unless I moved the actual fence? And I'm just speaking for everyone in my position.
I'm saying.
He said he supported you.
Yeah, I'm saying that I could live with a, I could live with a modification to the text that simply said four feet at the property line instead of three for the reasons you stated. I think that accomplishes the major end, the major goal, and I could live with that modification, I'm just saying.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Randy?
Well, I'm not necessarily in agreement with that, and it's not because of Suze's concern. It's just the public right-of-way concern. The fact that the differential between three feet and four feet, if someone's in a driveway backing up, your line of sight is impaired at four feet where it's not at three feet. So that's my concern, is it's a safety issue. You know, I can't get, I can't take care of Suze's issue because there's lots of other ways to mitigate her dog issue. But I'm not going to judge that. That's for her. But I'm just saying, from a safety standpoint, it sure seems to me that if a fence is four feet tall or someone allows even their hedge to get taller than four feet, that now we have a line of sight issue, and that's a safety issue. And I think the whole idea behind this ordinance and what we've been trying to do is to create a safer environment for people walking, riding bikes, especially children. So that's my take on it. That's how I see it.
Okay, I would agree with you, Randy, but as a suggestion, this is for staff. I don't know what the debate was at the Planning Commission, but it would be, would it be possible to put the, I should say, would it be practical to put the option of a four-foot fence under the same category as the cyclone or chain link fences and the razor wire and say that if a person will come in, and then you can be sure that the issue of the site distance is addressed, it may or may not be a problem, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's part of the.
That's a great idea.
I'll be with you in a second, Suze.
Yeah, and I think as part of the zone, you know, part of the zone clearance process that we recommend, or that the Planning Commission, council, and we have recommended, I think that can be done fairly easily.
Yeah.
Okay, Suze?
I think this is, could be a case-by-case basis because in my, I don't know why I'm losing my voice. I've been on the phone all day, that's why. I have a sidewalk in front of my fence. You know, it's, there's.
Right, I know where it is, yeah.
And my line of sight is constantly blocked by the big cars parked in front of my house, not my fence. So it's, you know, there has to be some flexibility for people with dogs, large dogs, to be able to secure the dog. That's more of a danger than, you know.
We're making it more complicated when we get into the size of the dog, because dogs can jump a four-foot fence, but Bill?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I really like your suggestion. And I think, Suze, the way we handle this is to have the case-by-case because there's a difference between a fence that's four foot high you can see through, and you could keep the dog in and still have distance between the slats where you can see through it, okay, versus solid. And that, I think we could all agree, you know, solid, but maybe if it's open enough to see through, we'd still keep the dogs in. So I like the case-by-case, okay?
Yeah, and I like that. And then you could also stipulate a fence that is not solid.
That's what I'm saying.
That makes a lot of difference.
Randy?
So, again, I'm not in complete disagreement with that, but in the $50 fee submitted to planning, should we require, obviously, they'd have to do a plot plan, and they should provide pictures. Because if we're going to have to go out and look at every one of these sites, we might want to increase our fee from 50 to 100 to recover our costs. So if we can simplify it and do it the same thing with a minor CUP, I'd have no problem with that.
Yeah, and I think to that point, if I may, real quick, is that's one reason we recommended adopting the fee by resolution because if we find that we are spending a lot of time on these, then we can come back and adjust that fairly easily. We'd come back and recommend that.
And the volume on it shouldn't be great, so even if we had to eat a few dollars for a while and maybe as just a general community service, it would work. All right, okay, well, do we have a motion? Are we ready for a motion?
I just had one comment too, and then, so, 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 the city has allowed someone to put their fence up, and it impairs my ability to operate my vehicle safely, in my opinion. What right do I have now to go back and argue that that four-foot fence is an impediment to my safety? Is there anything we want to deal with on that? Or is that a concern, or is that not a concern?
Well, that should be a concern when the review is made. That's fundamentally a problem for a corner lot. And for the safety issue, though, even backing out of a driveway, I would think that if your neighbor puts one up in the wrong place, so, you know, it would have to be evaluated, I would think. But once you say yes, yeah, and then you have, I suspect, Matt, that you have some liability too, don't you?
Well, the city's liability would likely be limited because of two things. One, the safety issue would be created by the property owner who approved, who built the fence, not the city who approved it. So we would tender any such suit, if filed against the city, to the property owner. Second, a condition of every land use permit is that the permutee indemnify the city for any problem or lawsuit that stems from their permit. So we would likely put that risk back on the permit holder, the fence creator. Second, and perhaps more to the point, the approval of the fence by zoning clearance would, now, as a zoning clearance, it doesn't include notice to the neighbor. It doesn't include a hearing. But if the neighbor saw the fence go up, depending on the timing, if it was still within the appeal period, they could appeal it. If the council was further concerned, we could add a stipulation. If the council was further concerned, we could add a stipulation that upon approval, um, these kinds of permits, notice be given to the immediate property owners nearby. So that during that appeal period, the neighbor next door, if it was a driveway-type situation, could file an appeal and challenge the approval. That would be more processed than we do for regular zoning clearances, but might be reasonable as a compromise.
Yeah, okay, and adds to the staff cost. Uh, Bill, your hand's up.
Uh, wouldn't a simpler way to handle that, Matthew, simply be a requirement that is part of the zoning clearance application that you're required to post on the property? Like you, you know, a conspicuous place that a zoning clearance has been applied for?
Yeah, that'd be fun too.
And then the neighbors could simply.
Read the notices.
Be that, without necessarily a lot of staff time contacting.
Okay, Randy?
Mayor, you know, I, this is a great discussion because we're gonna, we're gonna solve this like reasonable people. They, you know, there's, um, I'm working in the city of Ventura, and actually, when you're putting a six-foot fence up, you have to have your neighbors, you have to notify your neighbor. So they have a document that you just notify your neighbor that this is what you're putting up. And that in turn allows your neighbor to, you know, to do or say what they feel they need to do, but at least if you're putting something up and you've and you've acknowledged that it may impact my neighbor, I'm gonna talk to them, we're encouraging good neighbor en- environment. I'd be for that a hundred percent.
I like that, yeah.
I'd be reasonable.
So why don't I try a motion?
Good, please.
That, we, and I'm sorry, I can't be real specific. I'm gonna, as usual, lean on.
Even your not specific is more specific than most of ours, so go ahead, Bill. I have total confidence in you.
If I have one more comment before Bill makes his motion, if I can. Um, my concern is the height of green fences, just in general, even on, even on the sides of your property. Um, are we gonna, are we gonna, um, uh, enforce the seven-foot height on, uh, on green fencing as well as on, uh, standard CMU or standard wood fencing?
What, what do you mean by?
Part of the ord.
He means hedges. He means hedges.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, yeah.
This applies to hedges.
Yeah, is it drafted? It applies to hedges.
Right.
Yeah.
So. In our enforcement protocol, my expectation is that staff intends to enforce the new rules that apply to, uh, something like a hedge, which would not be legal non-conforming as to a prior height because seven feet wasn't allowed before, uh, or nine or ten or something taller. Enforcement would be targeted to situations that create a safety hazard as opposed to every hedge in the city, as some have no safety issue at all.
I agree with you.
I think that's great, yeah.
So, so my attempt at a motion is to say move approval subject to modification to include a procedure for a four-foot zero setback fence with city, uh, review approval. Uh, and a, uh, procedure for neighbor notification either by posting our direct communication or a zoning clearance application.
I'll second.
Okay, moving and seconded now. Is this gonna require this to be brought back for a first reading? Or is this, Matt, is this gonna be sufficient that, uh, and?
This is sufficient specificity to allow it to be introduced with that motion. And then staff will make the written edits and bring it back for adoption at your next meeting.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Are there any further questions? Uh, this doesn't specifically relate to anything in the, uh, fences and hedges thing, but as a pedestrian in town, I noticed that when there are hedges, I haven't noticed this with chain link or, you know, masonry fences, but hedges seem, and planted trees seem to go right out into the sidewalk to where you have to go into the street. So I think that we need to, along with this, once we get it adopted, there should be a program of both education to the public and then we should start, I sometimes even take clippers with me on my walks. I don't know that I'm making friends, but, uh, you know, it's, we, we need to start enforcing some of this if we really wanna be, uh, what do we call this? What is the active transportation zone amount of all?
Friendly.
All right, okay. Uh, anything else? If not, uh, we'll have a roll. Do we need a roll call on this because of the?
Yeah, as an ordinance, yes.
Yes, okay. Gail, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatts?
Oh.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Okay. Item number three under discussion, uh, coronavirus response and update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
Yours.
Thanks, and it's our last very brief presentation of the day, so I will pull that up quickly. So, uh, we just have a, a briefer update today. We went through the bigger changes at the last meeting, so we'll keep this one fairly brief, but um, we've kind of, uh, you know, each, uh, meeting, we've kind of walked through the, the latest statistics, and so, um, again, we'll do that, so, uh, we show here that as of, um, May twenty-sixth, there were six cases in the nine-three-oh-two-three zip code with twenty-three hospitalized and thirteen ICU patients. Um, as of, two months later, July fourteenth, there were twenty-nine cases in the nine-three-oh-two-three zip code, ninety-eight hospitalized and twenty-nine ICU patients. So, uh, we've seen recently that as of, uh, today, that there are a hundred fifteen cases in the nine-three-oh-two-three, or I should say, there have been a hundred fifteen cases. Those are not active, all active at this time, but there have been a hundred fifteen cases, so there's definitely been an increase over the last couple of months. But the positive is the hospitalizations have really gotten, gone down from ninety-eight two months ago to thirty-nine currently. And ICU from twenty-nine two months ago to fourteen currently. So, um, some of those key metrics and key, um, items of importance like the hospital bed availability and ICU availability have, uh, have been trending positively, so. Um, so, uh.
That, that, pardon me, those death statistics aren't just for the nine-oh-three-two-three, that's.
No, no, that's countywide.
Yeah, okay, good.
So that's increased unfortunately, but, um.
James, can I, before we move to the next one, is?
Yeah.
Um, are we allowed to talk about, um, specifically where the increases are occurring? Are they, are they, um, you know, in the ag industry? Are they in the, uh, senior citizen?
Yeah, and I, I, we've seen a couple of spikes. It's, it's, it's almost been, uh, and the county has reported this, so I, I, I know it's, they've made it public, but, um, the, it seems like each month, there's kind of a new area that they realize they need to, you know, emphasize. So a couple of months back, it was the ag, uh, industry. Last month, it was the senior centers and our senior housing, um, facilities. This month, the, the one that the county is really trying to get a grasp on right now are the jails. And, um, that's been a focus, uh, uh, and the, unfortunately, the jail, um, jails have had, uh, kind of a, an out, or I, I don't know if I wanna say outbreak, but they've had an increase, an uptick in cases, which has also caused our numbers overall as a county to, to stay to the point where uh, we, we have not gotten to the, um, to the point where we can drop to the next tier, uh, yet.
But we have a jail, but we don't use it anymore, right?
What was, I'm sorry.
We have a jail, but we don't use it anymore, Mike.
Oh, yeah, the, oh, the Ojai jail is not.
No, what the problem? Social distancing has become a problem.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be a good place to distance some people, but, uh.
The.
Yeah.
The question that I would have going back to the, again, to that, to the past chart was.
Yes.
If we're having an increase, where do we, you, you know, the county is stating that it's the, uh, food and beverage industry that they're seeing an increase in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is, are, are we, can we say that we might have the same issue with the influx of still, uh, tourism coming into the community on the weekends?
I think, I think that's always gonna be a concern. It's something, that's one reason why we've been so proactive and, you know, did the face covering requirement so early is because of that concern.
Hold on, James, hold on. Is there any data to support what Randy just said, or are you just hypothesizing? Cause I don't think we have any data whatsoever anywhere to support that it's restaurants, hospitality, or anything else in the Ojai Valley, or anywhere for that matter, where they're picking up Corona cases.
No, we, we don't have any granular data. I think.
Uh-oh.
From my perspective.
James, James, can I say another way of saying any data, whatever size, granular, large or in-between, or whatever P-size amount would be appropriate?
You make your point, Ryan. Uh, let the manager address it.
Correct. I think just, you know, my, my statement was just that that's, that's gonna be our concern for us is, is, uh, the influx of people that we're always gonna guard against, so.
Well, and there is data nationally that says that's a, an area of higher risk.
Mm-hmm.
We've done a pretty good job.
I'm trying to say, and Ryan, I, trust me, I don't want it to be that industry. Trust me, I don't want that, cause that's our industry. But what I'm trying to say, we've gone, in the, in the last four months, we have gone from, you know, so say we started out with zero, went to six, now we're at a hundred and fifteen cases in the nine-three-two-oh-three. I just wanna know where they are and why they are. And I think that's a legitimate question. If you wanna pinpoint it, um, or argue with me trying to pinpoint it, that's fine. I'm just saying, why do we have a hundred and fifteen cases? And if we do, where are they located? And are we allowed to answer that question?
I totally agree, but I will tell you, I've already asked, and the answer is, we don't have any data that supports where they came from. We don't have any. There's nobody's told. We know there were outbreaks in certain locations. We have heard that. We don't know exactly how many precisely, but we have no data, at least that's been provided to me through the county and multiple times asking about tracing where these came from in the nine-three-oh-two-three. We don't know whether these are, we, we do know that they only count nine-three-oh-two-three if they're residents here. We don't know how many of those were actually contracted in the valley versus contracted out of the valley. We don't know how many of those people were on vacation, out of town, or somewhere else. We don't have any data like that, so to say something like, wait, is this from people coming to town? Is complete speculation. Now, if it is, I'd like to know as well.
It's common sense.
It's not common sense. I, I totally disagree with you. How is it common sense that somebody from, let's say, the LA area comes to Ojai for the weekend and leaves and goes back, and that showed up as a nine-three-oh-two-three number, or somehow related to someone in the nine-three-oh-two-three contracting coronavirus? Johnny, I have no idea how you can just equate that as being common sense. If somebody comes from LA and visits and leaves.
Ryan, Ryan, I'll answer your question. No one, I don't believe Randy or anyone is suggesting that the other foreigners, people coming to the valley are bringing the disease, but the, the hospitality, which is our industry, we wanna protect that, uh, is clearly, uh, an exposure to a risk if the people are coming from other places like Sturgis. Now, we're not saying that the motorcyclists who come here, uh, from Sturgis are causing a problem, but it is clearly one of the things we have to be concerned with, and I think we have done a really good job in the town by being alert to that and using the face coverings. It's the best we can do. There is nothing that says that you can tell who came from Los Angeles to spend the weekend, uh, and spread it. But it doesn't take, you know, look at the numbers. There are hundreds of unknown cases. So to that degree, you are correct. They don't, we don't know, uh, Randy.
I'm sorry, I didn't really wanna. We just don't know. I mean, I, I'm not disagreeing with your.
Yeah, okay, good. Randy?
Yeah, so, yeah, I didn't want this to be an arg, an argument, but um, what I wanted to say is the questions that I'm asked, and I'm sure all of you were asked, is why are they increasing and do we know why and where they're increasing? That's a question that I'm asked daily, and I don't have an answer for that. Um, and I don't wanna throw anything out there, um, you know, that's, that's not accurate, so that's why I asked tonight. Can we, can we, um, identify, for instance, the seven new cases that have, that have appeared, you know, just this week, this, over this weekend? I don't know if we can, but I'm saying.
The public health officials have, have people that trace that sort of thing to the degree it's possible, but they generally, as a rule, for personal privacy, they don't share that with the general public or us.
Right, so again.
They do tell us when they think there's a hotspot.
And, and it wasn't over the weekend, it was seven new cases reported today, so that, that's all I'm trying to say is, we just need to be aware of it, and obviously, if we can't, if we can't give a, a great answer, we, we just need to be able to say, contact our county health services. Maybe they'll have more information for you, but I'm just, I'm asked it all the time. I'm sure you guys are too.
Right, yeah, and that's the question, I think it comes to all our minds, uh, uh, James, uh, doesn't the public health department, uh, notify the local authorities when there's a hotspot?
You know, when there's a hot, when there's a hotspot, yes.
A cluster, yeah, and now, yeah, to Ryan's point, we don't, you know, no restaurant so far has been identified as a hotspot, right?
Yeah, we've not had a hotspot within the, within the, uh, the city of Ojai.
No location, no business, no industry, no sector, nothing specific has come out other than old folks' homes, and they were specifically listed as being OQ in Ojai. That's what we had. Anything else is, is not fair to pin it on those businesses. It's irresponsible to say we have any idea where they're coming from. I would love to have the data. Well, hold on, hold on. I would love to have the data, and if the county would provide it, I would love to be able to answer the question that Randy's asking about, because I get asked all the time too.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's fair, and I, by the way, this wasn't a comment of what Randy or you said, Mr. Mayor. It was frankly what James was saying about certain industries where we think it's a problem and people from out of town. But I, I don't think it's fair that we can say that. I would love to know.
Okay, if you don't think it's fair.
Put a wall around the city and have less outbreak.
All right, enough, Ryan, you can, please put it back on gear, okay? We'll get, I, we've heard it, okay? We understand you. Uh, James, you have anything further?
A couple of quick points. So, uh, we, we mentioned last time that the Ventura County is in this widespread, uh, category, which is the, um, the highest risk level. Uh, the county is still at that level, although, uh, uh, we have been getting closer to, to getting the numbers to a point where that might change. I see today that forty-two new cases were reported countywide, so if that continues, that, that would likely change. And just so everybody kind of understands, we wanted to, to, to let everybody know that the, the current process is that once the numbers are, um, at the, the appropriate level for fourteen days, then the, uh, county would be able to move to the next level, so uh, just as far as, we've been getting a lot of questions about what's the timeframe for that change, and it would be fourteen days of, of, uh, continuing to be under these, these numbers.
Starting when, uh?
As soon as we got to that number. So, so once we get to these numbers, then for, we have to maintain it for fourteen days to move to the next tier.
Okay, we just haven't gotten there yet.
We haven't gotten there yet. We're very close, but.
Okay.
Um, and, and the county, uh, the point I was making earlier is that the county had said if it wasn't for the, uh, the spike at the jail, that we would have been at that number, so. So, um, the, the reason why that's important, you know, other than just moving from, you know, one color to another on the tier list, is that there are certain things that can open, so we're not gonna go through all of them, but we wanted to kind of give people an idea so that business owners can start, uh, you know, planning accordingly. Um, uh, so you see a couple of key categories for Ojai here, all retail under the current tier. Uh, they can only open indoors at twenty-five percent capacity. Once it moves to tier two, they can open at fifty percent capacity, so it opens that up a little bit. Personal care services right now is outdoor only in Ventura County. Once we move to two, tier two, they can open indoor with some modifications. Uh, movie theaters and places of worship, uh, right now, outdoor only. Once we move to tier two, they can open indoor with reduced capacity. Restaurants currently outdoor only. Once we move to tier two, uh, those would be able to open indoor with, with a reduced capacity as well. Uh, and, and one of the things we want to make the point here is just for people to start kind of planning ahead, looking at what tier two means and, and, uh, you know, some businesses may realize that even when we go to tier two, they're still gonna have a reduced capacity, so they, they may wanna contact us sooner rather than later for some outdoor dining space or outdoor, uh, business space. We have had a, a, a little bump. We went, we had been, uh, issued fifteen outdoor permits and, um, and kind of had been stuck there. We now have issued twenty, uh, from, in the last two weeks, we issued five more, so we're at twenty outdoor permits citywide. Um, so, uh, we wanted to let people know about that. Um, lastly, the COVID testing that we had mentioned, we were working on at the last meeting, has, has, um, rolled out. It's at Sarsadi Park every Monday through October twenty-sixth, from noon to five PM. Uh, there, it's no cost, no appointment and walk-up, and so far, the first week had a, a decent line, but they said, uh, that it's been going pretty smoothly and not a long wait, so, um.
Also, uh, James, it's also in the lower, lower parking lots, we need to let.
Yes, yes, it's in the lower parking lot.
I, I have a question of James.
Yes.
The previous slide. Think about the previous slide.
Mm-hmm, this one?
No, the, this one. Why is there a different standard for personal care services and hair? No, the, this one. Why is there a different standard for personal care services and hair salons and barber shops?
We, we asked the same question to the county and, and, uh, it's from the state guidance. So the state is the one that's determined that. I asked the county, you know, I told them, we're going to get calls. People are going to ask us, and I can't explain it. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And the county's response was, we can't really explain it either, but it's, it's been handed down from the state. Um, it, it appears to us and the county that, you know, the difference between a hair salon and a nail salon, it, there's not much of a difference. So, um, that is a question we've raised and we've, we've kind of, uh, tried to engage the county in that discussion, but again, it, it comes from the state, so it's, it's going to be a challenge.
Uh, I believe there's a history to that. In the, uh, early days of the, uh, pandemic, going back to March, maybe even before then, February, that there was kind of a cluster that occurred within like nail salons. And so, well, for better or for worse, they came down on that, uh, and have kept it ever since.
That, that was the same story we were told, which, you know, it seems strange to base it on that.
Yeah, two things. One, I think we need to give, uh, all of us need to kind of take a little bit of credit, especially James. Uh, Ojai was really in the lead of pushing to drop the, the 24-hour lodging constraint on turnover. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, we really, James especially, really took the lead in, um, uh, and was part of our, our group discussion that we have every once in a while, uh, to point out that the rest of the counties around us, uh, were not putting that rule in, and that's been dropped and that's really helping the lodging industry without really compromising safety. So we can take some credit for being in the leadership of that, I believe. And, uh, the second thing is, uh, James, the county had said they were going to apply to the state to exclude the jail numbers for purposes of calculation. Is there any update on that?
No update yet. No update yet. They, they, they were very, um, passionate about it though, and said that they were really going to pursue that, which would, which would move us forward a lot more quickly.
Right, okay.
Yeah, one of the points that they made about the jails is that people get brought to the jails from multiple different counties, so it's really not fair to, to punish Ventura County for that. So.
Uh, James, uh, do you have enough authority under the emergency powers to address the request that was made during public comment? Uh, for the, is it Mandela or, is that the?
Yes, yes. And, yeah, and, uh, I got the request. We've had some email issues here, so I got the request actually during this meeting. So we'll take a look at it and work with them, uh, work with them to try to make it happen. So.
Yeah. Hopefully they can, you know, socially manage it. When tourists show up, it is tougher. Uh, they, they don't know what the local drill is, but okay. Are there other questions for James on this? If not, we'll move on.
I have a question, James. James, are you done with the presentation?
There's, there's one more slide, uh, just on the eviction moratorium. Uh, I'll, I'll just quickly say that both the state, we talked about this a little bit last council meeting, but both state and federal eviction protections have been put in place. Um, our city's executive order that implemented both, uh, were drafted to say that they lasted the duration of the emergency, which we still, unfortunately, we're six months in and we don't know how long that is exactly. So it's something we wanted to, um, to just, uh, bring back and point and, and give an update that state law provides some protections now for, uh, for, uh, for tenants. And there's a couple of conditions, and federal law as well provides some condition for tenants who, who have annual incomes under certain amounts. Uh, but, uh, and so that's kind of an evolving issue, uh, and we, the city's executive order is still in place, but it's now being impacted by these state and federal orders. So that's something we'll keep an eye on. So.
So no evictions through December 31, 2020?
Uh, if, if it's certain categories, or if you're, if you meet these qualifications. So for the federal order is that tenants, uh, there, it's for tenants who have a financial hardship due to an annual income of less than $99,000 if single or $198,000 if filing a joint return.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, when, when the time is right, James, can, can we discuss Ojai Day? Um, the issue with closing the street, perhaps explain to the public that because it's a state highway, the expense of managing that is out of our reach.
Yes, yes. Then, and, uh, so we, we've, uh, talked to Caltrans, talked to the barricade company, um, put, uh, a basic plan together. And I, I do want to say, actually, let me back up that. We had three different full plans for Ojai Day where we were trying to make something work. And, and the, uh, the, at the end of the day, and people may have read the article in the Star yesterday, but at the end of the day, the county order, uh, which is in line with the state order, so it's not necessarily the county, but it's, it's not going to allow for gatherings by, uh, by Octo- by mid-October. And so, uh, we had three different plans that had different, you know, less vendors, less crowding, but it still would have been a gathering. Uh, so, uh, we recently applied our, um, reached out to Caltrans and talked about what they would need to issue a permit to just close Ojai Avenue. Uh, they requested a traffic control plan. We need to have barricades. We need to have, uh, staffing. Uh, and the estimated cost at this point is between $10,000 to $15,000, which i- is a challenge for us because, uh, the other, you know, update that we'll get more into at the next meeting, but it does relate to coronavirus, is that the, uh, the city's budget still is, is taking a, a hit. Uh, you know, I think, uh, some people have said now that we're recovering, but the city still is, is not recovering, and it'll be a while before we do. Uh, so with the cost and with, uh, the other challenges that the, um, Caltrans had just stated, that without a firm plan of, of what exactly we're proposing, that, uh, they couldn't give us a, like a tentative approval. So it would be a potential investment without, you know, an ability to, to, um, to do, or with, without knowing that we're going to be able to do something. So I have recommended that, uh, like Thousand Oaks, that we, uh, you know, postpone or cancel our event this year.
In- including the closing of.
Yes.
Ojai Avenue.
Yes.
So, but we can org- you know, the public can organize on their own an Ojai Day bike ride.
Sure.
Yeah.
Roads are, public rights away.
You go, girl.
Yeah, and we're, you know, people are getting creative. We got the, the proposal for the Mandela at the fountain, you know, which is interesting. And then we had somebody else just submitted a proposal today that we're working on to do some sort of driving, uh, art show, um, you know, that probably, I don't think, I think they're planning it the weekend before, but there's, people are getting creative with some, you know, socially distanced, uh, events that we'll be working on. So.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Um, next item, number four, proposed Second Amendment agreement with the Sterling Venue Ventures.
Yes, and I'll, I'll keep this very brief, um, and of course be happy to answer questions. And I think that, um, Mr. Sterling's also available if, if there are any questions. But the very brief report is that about a year ago, we came to council and we made a change that we were excited about. Uh, we're in the last year of the agreement. We changed to a $2,500 per event flat fee. And we had anticipated that with the, uh, great season planned, this, that we would, for the first year, um, bring in some revenue for the city and provide these, uh, you know, great events for the, for the community. Unfortunately, it seems like every item today goes, you know, the next sentence is unfortunately COVID hit. And, uh, that season did not happen. And so that's, uh, the, the bad timing aspect of it is that that was the last year of the existing agreement. Uh, and so, uh, I've been talking to Sterling and, and they've been very patient, which we appreciate, because we didn't know when we were going to be able to bring this back. And we had worked on it as far back as March and, and, you know, had to postpone for a variety of reasons. But Sterling, eh, needs to essentially know if they're going to be able to reschedule all their events for next year. And right now, there's not an agreement in place for next year. So although it's strange timing, we brought this item, which is a four-year extension at the same term, the $2,500 flat fee per event. And we are recommending approval of that four-year extension with the $2,500 per fee event. Uh, the request that Sterling has that council can discuss is, uh, they have, they currently have a maximum number of events of 17 per, per, uh, per season. They are requesting, uh, to increase that and have asked for up to 24. Uh, so obviously council would be able to discuss whether to allow that the number of events to be increased or how many to allow it to be increased, uh, to. And, um, just, uh, you know, as a, for some background, the reason why, um, uh, th- this is a positive, I think, as the reason why they were requesting the increased events was because of the positive, um, the positive interactions in presenting the, uh, concerts for the community and, and that it's been a, uh, it seems to have been a, a mutually beneficial agreement up, uh, you know, over the last couple of years. So with that, the, uh, agreement is a four-year extension with a $2,500 fee for a number of events for council to determine, and that's what's before you tonight.
Bill.
Uh, first of all, I support this, and, but I do have a question on the increase from 17 to 24. When this was before us, uh, the only issue there was conflicts with traditional community events.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and would, how would that be handled in terms of when we finally see the other end of this virus situation? Uh, obviously, people are going to want to come back with community, their traditional community events. So how do we, uh, um, how is that going to be handled? Would that be handled just administratively through the city manager's office? In terms of making it clear, we're not necessarily creating an entitlement to 24. It's just that it can go up more if it doesn't conflict with community events.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we can, uh, we could tweak that wording to match that, but I think it does work with how we've currently been implementing this, which is that Sterling has, um, they have specific dates, uh, kind of reserved, and, and then we have specific dates reserved for the community events. And we work together. If one overlaps, Sterling has been very good about if, uh, there is a community event, not an event scheduled, they have been willing to, you know, to offer up those dates that have been pre-reserved and vice versa, when we, when they wanted to do an event, and then we had, uh, an event previous, or that had normally been held on that date, but wasn't held on that date that year, we were able to modify as well. So, so that's kind of how it works on the backend.
Okay, Randy has his hand up, uh.
Um, uh, Mayor and Bill, the, um, you know, it's interesting, when this originated, there was a master calendar that was developed, and through the master calendar, Lance and Luanne checked their dates along with the historical dates of the community, um, members. And it, it always worked out well. Um, and I ju- I see the continuation of that taking place in James's office now. Um, and, and I believe that he's going to be turning this event coordinator position, if we ever get it fulfilled, into actually managing that. The thing that I'd like to say is, is, first of all, I'd like to thank Lance, uh, for coming back. Um, it must be pretty hard being out of business for a year and a half, if not, you know, maybe just been a long time. So thank you for wanting to come back. And I know that the people I speak to, the, in, in this community enjoy, um, just, just, just enjoy tremendously the events that take place under your leadership. So thank you. And I'm with Bill. I agree 100% with this. And I would just say up to seven and, and, um, let the city manager be the approving, um, or the, the, the person making that approval and recommendation. Do we need a motion?
Go, go for it, Randy.
Do we have, do we have a motion? Did, uh, was yours made in the form of a motion, Bill?
Sure, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, uh, subject to the extra seven dates being, uh, managed at administrative discretion. By the city manager.
So if there is room and they can reach a, an approval at the staff level, they can have more than the 17, but no ongoing commitment to that in order to accommodate the, uh, acts of the, you know, concerts they got that were bumped this year. Uh, okay, is there a second? Randy, did you second that?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, so it's moved to second. Any further discussion? Do we need a, since this is a contract, do we need a roll call?
Uh, yeah, and I also wanted to confirm through the clerk, the deputy clerk, that is, that there's no public comment on this one?
Oh.
Correct, there were none.
Okay, so Lance and Luanne were available in case we wanted to ask questions, is that?
Yeah, I think they'll, I think they'll happily take the approval though.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, uh, Gail, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Uh, that brings us to item number, what, five? Yes, uh, the, is this 5G? James?
Yes. And, uh, uh, I know the city attorney, um, has an update. The, the, the item is an update, uh, in accordance with some recent changes to the law, and I'll let the city attorney, uh, introduce that.
Thank you. Mayor, council before you is a proposed set of amendments that are relatively minor but useful to the city's existing small wireless facilities regulations. And I'm going to address, but then not use the term 5G. 5G is a marketing term used by cell carriers to sell their products to the public. It is not a regulatory term recognized in federal law, nor is it recognized in any of the state laws, nor would I recommend we use it because it doesn't mean anything. It's like saying, you know, um, someone has the, the best pair of jeans. It's a marketing term. It's not a legal or definable standard term. Turning to what is on the legal side, in August, uh, mid-August, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled in a case brought by the city of Portland and another, uh, couple hundred cities around the country challenging an FCC order that came down in 2018 that resulted in us adopting this resolution at the beginning. And the Ninth Circuit, uh, vacated a portion of the FCC order relating to aesthetic regulations. It upheld the rest of it. Um, it upheld the concept and it upheld the issue of uh, the limits on the fees and the limits on some of the processing for the small cell applications. But hopefully, the Ninth Circuit ruled that the portion of the FCC's order that required that aesthetic regulations on small wireless cell facilities be no more burdensome than those on other technologies is vacated. So too did the Ninth Circuit vacate the requirement that such aesthetic regulations be objective. In doing so, the court said that it recognizes state and local governments often have legitimate aesthetic reasons for accepting some deployments and rejecting others. And that cell towers present a different, and, and cell facilities present a different aesthetic issue than a typical telephone pole or regular utility pole. Therefore, affirming the power of the city to regulate cellphone facilities, wireless facilities, at a higher level with greater aesthetic protections than those available for typical, uh, utility poles or telephone poles. So to take advantage of that opportunity, um, mindful that while the window to petition for securi to the US Supreme Court has not yet closed, we don't expect securi to be granted. Um, and if it is, we will deal with that. Staff recommends that we modify the proposed or the existing resolution slightly to strengthen our stealth protections. And the, the packet has the exact changes, but generally, we adjusted the finding sections regarding the stealth requirements to delete the prior language referring to appropriate stealth techniques and replace that with all technically feasible stealth techniques, strengthening the stealth protections and ensuring that if a small cell facility application is received, that it could not be approved unless the facility was stealth. Stealth meaning that it does not look like a cell tower. It would be, nothing would be visible that is an antenna or is a, um, a wire or, uh, supporting structure, anything that would create or, uh, enable it to operate as a wireless cellphone facility. Instead, it would have to look like something else, look like the side of the building, um, look like a parapet, behind a parapet wall, uh, or be placed within a roof structure. Um, and we do not, we continue to include the requirement that faux trees, fake trees, are not an appropriate stealth facility in the city of Ojai. With that, I would recommend, uh, the staff, the, the council approve it, and am available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Susan?
And we, we can discuss it now, correct?
That's right.
So, um, Matt, it surprises me when you, you know, the, 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 my concern is not, is not so much the aesthetics, but the controversy worldwide about the health effects of 5G technology. I heard you say that, uh, something about the term, that when I listened to the Santa Barbara hearings on this, say, you know, people use the term 5G technology, and that implies, you know, higher speed internet service and possibly increased, um, health effects due to the ra- radiation. So with that understanding, if my voice holds out, I work. um, I worked with Shalom Joshua on a, a preamble to the resolution that I would like to read and see if the council can work with me so that, um, and I want to make clear to the public that I am opposed to the bringing this, even though it's an uphill battle, and it's like, you know, a David and Goliath situation, I oppose bringing this type of technology to Ojai, at least at this point in time, there's too many unknowns. So here's my preamble to the resolution. I actually wrote this with Shalom Joshua, and he, and he submitted it, excuse me. It is my view that the resolution before us would, would benefit from a preamble which informs the public why the scope of the resolution is exceedingly narrow, is ba- it's addresses the aesthetic concerns, that's the narrowness. With this in mind, please note the following. The Federal Communications Commission has ordered that the public cannot invoke health concerns or environmental concerns as reasons to resist deployment of wireless technology, including 5G. The FCC, however, does not make laws, the US Congress does. The laws governing the FCC's wireless activities are essentially found in the Telecommunications Act of 1996. The Telecommunications Act makes no mention of a prohibition of discourse with authorities about the effects of wireless on health. It does mention such prohibition regarding environmental concerns. The FCC has implored sleigh of hand to pretend that the word environment in its governing laws includes issues of health. It does not. It has been pointed out in recent court proceedings, if the Congress meant health, it would have said so plainly. The FCC has done a major disservice to the American public by twisting semantics to prevent public debate on health effects of wireless technology. It is, in my view, because of delivered, this deliberate distortion of words of law, that Resolution 20 on the Ojai City that's before us right now, um, is so narrow, confining itself largely to the aesthetics of wireless equipment and not at all to the effects on the health of human beings. I just have one more paragraph. A preamble to the resolution can reference, for the record, why there is no mention of the effects of wireless health. It can declare that the city of Ojai, if it had a choice in this matter, would decline to have 5G in the Ojai Valley until it has, is proven safe to do so. And there's a, a re- a source for the information that I just cited and that you have received via email. And perhaps all we need to do is add a couple of sentences as, as states in the end, if the council agrees with me, uh, that, that this resolution only addresses the health effects, the, excuse me, the aesthetic, um, if, uh, I don't know if effects is the right word, the asc- the aesthetic considerations due to the, um, help me out, Matt, that it's illegal to address the health concerns, or something towards to that effect. I, I would like-
Law's been preempted, Suzie. You know, we have no, no legal authority, is that correct, Matt?
That's-
My read of-
Yeah.
My read of the relevant law is that under 47 United States Code, Section 332, subsection, uh, C7B, little Romanate 4, the city has been pre- I wanted to get that right for the record, in case the wireless companies are listening. Um, city has been preempted from regulating any wireless facility on the grounds of the, or the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, which would include radiation, to the extent that the facility complies with the FCC's regulations to that effect. The argument asserted by Mr. Joshua and others, uh, behind him is that there's a distinction between environmental effects and health effects. And I understand that that argument has been raised in a case filed last year and in some other cases. None of those cases has yet reached resolution. I'm not conf- I'm not optimistic that they will, although I'd love to be proven wrong. Um, my concern is, and my recommendation to the city, is to, uh, avoid trying to tap into that distinction when that case law has not yet been developed. Uh, the current case law is that environmental effects includes health and environmental effects, because health is an element of the environment. Uh, and so I would recommend that we shy away from that language, and if the city were so, or the council were so inclined, we'd be, we could add a preamble that, or a sentence to the preamble that we have an existing reference to the narrowness of this resolution to include, uh, that the city would act with greater authority if federal law so permitted it, or something to that effect.
Yes, I would be happy with that, and I think the public that is concerned would appreciate that. I know that it's an uphill battle, but still, we have to plant the seed, you know, and, and make our, make it, ma- state our case. So if you could add, if the council is in agreement, if we could add that one sentence that you just said, I thought that was, that, about the why, can you remember well it's?
Well, what I would suggest, looking at the res- at the resolution as presently proposed, on the second page, in the third whereas from the top, and the whereas is outnumbered, but in the third whereas from the top, it speaks to the council supports calls for wireless, small, uh, wireless facilities, uh, hu- uh, human health and environmental concerns to be investigated. And we could add a line that the city, uh, further wouldn't, would it be permitted, permitted to do so? It would pause installation of wireless facilities pending the completion of those investigations if federal law so allowed.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution the, the way that, uh, Matt suggests that we can amend it.
Give a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved in second, and Randy, you had your hand up.
Um, is this coming back for a second reading?
No, this is the resolution, so it would be if approved by the council adopted tonight.
Well, the que- so the question is, why don't we table this and bring it back so that we can read it? Um, with this terminology that Suzie would like to put in it, rather than rushing something through? I had no idea what she was speaking about. Um, so I would just like a little more, I'd like a better opportunity to understand what we're trying to do here, what, what she's trying to achieve.
It sounds like a signing statement, you know, that the-
No, our hands are tied to a degree, so I understand that, and I understand the need to, um, not rush. How about this, how many 5G, James, how many 5G applications have we had?
I just about have one.
We've had one inquiry.
We've, yeah, one, we've not had an application yet, which is critical, because we only have 60 days to act on it once it comes in. So they haven't applied yet.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why I would urge adoption, because we, the, the application that we might get in is in a high visibility area. And, uh, I was, I was hoping, and I think the Mr. Summers did a masterful job of taking that court case, putting in, into this language what we, you know, making sure that we have the discretion that we can have, and I want to make sure this is in place when that application comes in. So that's why I'd like to, us to proceed tonight.
I would like to proceed, uh, but with that added sentence that, um, Mr. Summers eloquently expressed.
Well.
It's, it's, it's legal, it's lea- there's no, we are not doing anything illegal, but we are protecting what we can protect to the extent-
Well, like I said, I, I can't support something like that, so I'm not voting no because I'm against it. I'm voting no, because I think we could table it and have it come back, and so that we could all read it at the next council meeting. If an application comes in, we still have a 50-day grace period to approve or deny. So this doesn't impact that, I'm just, that's where, where I'm at. So I'll vote no, but you need, but you know why I'm voting no.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, Matt, you know what, I mean, it's just like one sentence, that, like I say, a signing statement, the same, we'd do more if we could.
Yeah, so we have a motion to vote on.
Okay, we got a motion to vote on, all right.
Is there any public comment?
Oh, you're right, I don't have any cards, does anybody else have any cards, or?
We did have- I didn't receive any, but I wanted to confirm.
We did have a couple, I believe, on this item, but I think one was-
I think they were just emails.
Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry, those were the emails.
The email basically expressed, even the other email basically expressed what I read.
Yeah, Shalom Joshua and Amber Lennon.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have anybody in the queue or the waiting room that wants to speak?
No.
No one in the waiting room.
Okay, good. Okay, do we need a roll call, uh, on a resolution?
Yes.
Uh, I would recommend a roll call here, yes.
All right, Gail, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, item number six, uh, extension of agreement for Building and Safety Services with the Charles Abbott and Associates. James?
Thank you. Um, this item is, um, the first of, of a, a few that we're working on that, uh, just to kind of set the stage, we are looking closely at all of our contracts currently and trying to find savings under the circumstances. Um, and, uh, this is the first that we are bringing back where we, you know, worked with the vendor to identify some, some potential savings. Um, and, uh, just on that point, I'll mention that we are, we're planning at the next council meeting to have a, uh, a budget, uh, review item, and between now and then, we will talk to the, um, we will also have a budget committee meeting and, uh, focused on, you know, some of these cost-saving measures in, and, uh, trying to, um, stabilize our, our reserves, which have been reduced, uh, from where, where they were prior. So that's something we are actively working on, this is the first of hopefully, uh, our, you know, what we plan to be several that we're going to bring back. Uh, it also coincides with, we were working with Charles Abbott to extend their contract for Building and Safety Services. We, uh, committed to bring that back in September of each year, uh, in advance, uh, with it expiring at the end of the year. So we are doing that this year as well. Uh, as, as I mentioned, um, the, the current agreement with Charles Abbott is for 65%, uh, I'm sorry, Abbott will, uh, receive 65% of the first $30,000 per month collected in fees, and then 50% of any additional, uh, money collected. Uh, in this proposal, they will reduce, they, uh, they were willing to accept a reduction to 62% of the first $30,000 per month, which potentially could result in, in, uh, savings of between $10,000 to $15,000 per year. Uh, and the, uh, nice thing was, uh, they were willing to do, to do that without reducing the level of staff. Um, so they would continue to provide the, uh, the, um, uh, building inspector at the public counter from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM Monday through Thursday, and 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM, and then 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM Friday, and then the building official will still provide the three days a week of counter hours with, at the reduced cost. So with that, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's, and, you know, that's the, um, the item in a nutshell, is this is the, uh, ex- the, the extension. We did, uh, um, uh, I agreed, as part of their, um, fee reduction, we agreed to, uh, request a w- a one-year extension option. So this is a one-year contract with a mutual one-year extension, which, uh, Abbott is aware that council would have to approve that, um, approve the extension option at this time, and may not, but, uh, we, I, uh, we, uh, agreed to recommend that with the fee reduction, which would, um, remain in place for both years, so.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Uh, motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, uh, any further discussion? Not hearing any, okay, uh, do we need a, a roll call on this as a contract amendment, or?
As a contract with the amount of money at stake, yes.
That's right, okay, Gail, please call the roll.
Uh, Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatz?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, council member reports, let's start with Bill.
Uh, I'm going to make a comment, uh, for the record, since, uh, you know, I didn't want to reply to email, uh, communication regarding the, uh, payments to the sheriff in terms of law enforcement contract. We, I believe, have two payments we've not made, and, uh, I think it's important to understand, this is in an environment where, um, we actually don't have a contract. We actually don't have a lease on the facility that the sheriff is using. Ryan and I and James had a meeting where we laid out a lot of these issues recently. Um, and I think it's, uh, it's important to understand and just communicate to all my colleagues that, um, I believe there's a strong case to be made where the sheriff doesn't want to make, and the county do not want, have the flexibility of the kind of policies for handling small cities that our surrounding county sheriffs do have, um, in, in terms of what the, the mayor has talked about in the past, in terms of fractional approaches, uh, to minimum service, that we're being invoiced for services that we have really no discretion o- over, since it's a minimum level, that's the same level as Fillmore, um, in, in terms of the core services, which is, uh, twice the population and much more densely populated in terms of area than we are. And that, um, by various metrics, it appears that we are, uh, uh, in my opinion, and I think the case is worthy of debate, it, it's at least a debatable, honestly debatable position, that we are subsidizing the, uh, the county coverage in the unincorporated area with this contract. That's a point of contention, but we, but I think that, um, the, uh, by the, looking at those metrics, uh, various ways of looking at it, and, you know, something on the order of what we haven't paid is not out of line in terms of a proportionality. Um, I just wanted, I just wanted to say that for the record, that I don't think that, um, what's, what we're doing is un- irresponsible, and I think it's a, subject to a, an ongoing discussion, and I believe that discussion that, you know, Ryan was there as well, along with James, but we had a respectful, uh, uh, exchange with the county officials, and I, I think that the, the question is open-ended and ongoing.
Okay, Suzie, do you have a report?
Well, I just, um, want to congratulate Josh and Rebecca Tuchel for the premiere of their film, uh, which was, you know, they live in Ojai, remember when they came to the council?
Oh, yeah, yes.
So Kiss the Ground documentary, and I think they had a, um, a drive-in show last night in Santa Barbara. I believe 600 people attended.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, there's, um, there's something we're missing right now, they're doing a live stream of the film, and I, there may be a sh- a drive-in showing in Ojai, I think. And, uh-
Is that going to be on Netflix, did they say?
Yes, yes, it's on Netflix, great reviews and all the major net things. And great article in Ojai Valley News Friday, page A5. And, I mean, it's, it, it, this has everything to do with the future of Ojai, because they are in support of transitioning to regenerative pesticide-free a- agriculture. And I emphasize the word transition, it could take many years because of financial constraints, but this is critical for the future of Ojai, so that our agriculture is truly sustainable into the future. Instead of, yeah, and then I want to call your attention, there's a great article in the September issue of Western City. It's called "From Vision to Reality: Lessons Learned in Complete Street Implementation." And, um, and the League of Cities is going, I'm going to attend the League of Cities, and they're having a workshop, uh, workshop on this. I'm, I'm going to be attending virtually, right, Randy?
Okay, ride your, ride your bicycle virtually.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, uh, Randy?
No, other than, I think Bill's comments are, are worthy of, um, an agendized discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I was a little concerned about where he was heading to it, heading, you know, into his statement, but, um, I think this is something that we should have as a council, um, a better understanding of what him and Ryan um, are talking to and talking about, and, uh, which way we think that we're going to be heading. Um, especially if, if we're, if we owe them a certain amount of money and we feel not contractually, uh, um, obligated to make that payment, because we don't have a contract, but that's why I think I'd like to see that agenda-
Sort of a yes and no, but you're right. Uh, and I think that I, I've spoken with the city manager on this, uh, to talk with the city attorney. What we're really talking about is renegotiating a contract, and so I, it would be better handled through the attorney and the city manager setting it up, than like you say, Randy, get it on, you know, an agenda where we can discuss it, uh, or negotiations, uh, I don't know what, uh, limits we have on, uh, it's not the sort of thing that normally you would be doing, you know, the proposal- Uh, it's not the sort of thing that normally you would be doing, you know, the proposal would be in public, but we should be uh understanding what the negotiation's gonna be about. So far, I don't think the county's taking this terribly seriously and I think that's too bad, but uh it is a, it is what it is, okay. Ryan, are you with us?
The um, yeah, we did have our meeting with the county. I I, I, I personally do think we have a valid contract. It's just expired, but it's been ongoing and the legality of it, I don't think it's a non-contract, but it's been a difficult battle, but I, I don't really think um, well, we can bring it back. There's nothing to bring back, though. There's, there's been no counter offer. There's no thing we can accept. Um, we talked about potentially making an offer to them because it seems like that may be the next appropriate step. But I don't really want to talk about it in public because it's an ongoing negotiation. I didn't really think we should bring it up and I thought we weren't gonna bring it up at all, but uh it's ongoing, so that's where we're
I agree with you, so we'll put it in.
On how to put it on your agenda.
Yeah, uh, I attended a webinar, is that what you call it, a virtual on uh what they call orphaned and idle oil wells. That's kind of hard to say, you know, pick a peck of pickle pepper. Uh, the uh state of California has a law that says that the oil and gas producers have an obligation when uh wells are out of service or are marginally productive and are being dropped to plug the wells because as a well ages, if it isn't properly sealed off or if it's just left idle, uh, it gets worse and worse for the environment, all the way to explosive gases as well as the air pollution. Anyway, uh, the thing that caught my attention was that it's estimated that in California alone, there's about eight and a half billion dollars in uh idle and marginal uh or orphaned wells. Uh, and there's about something less than eighty million dollars in the fund that's supposed to re- repair that. Uh, and then the, the kicker was that uh local, the state is not doing too much about this without requests coming from the local governments. Uh, and the school district, uh Beverly Hills High School, I think I have that right, uh has spent fifty million dollars plugging wells that were drilled on their property and neighboring properties for the health of students. Anyway, I bring this to the council's attention because I think, I, I put a, a request in and James and I both tuned into this. Uh, we're gonna find out. We know that we have one well that's probably right on the border. Uh, you know, we had that issue to the, what? I guess southeast of us, uh where well, oil is produced. And uh, it's, it shows up in the inventory of these wells that are idle. So I, I think it's gonna be worth the council making that request and verifying the information and then uh seeing where that leads us. Uh, when you say, that, that man said incredible, you talk about, what was it the? Not the, was it the super fund for hazardous cleanups or something the feds have, you know, and of course, under the president administration, none of that's available. Uh, but in our little valley, we really do not need, uh, you know, abandoned wells that have not been properly sealed. So anyway, uh, for what that's worth, uh, James, you have a report for us?
Just a couple of quick things. One is actually in line with, with that is um uh, today the county held um the um hearing on the Coniston Road um project, which the city, under its legislative program, had written a support letter because because it involves flaring and trucking out um oil with your concerns in the valley. So we provided a support letter and my understanding that I just, I got an update as we were talking is that Supervisor Bennett um had made a motion to postpone the project until the general plan, the Ventura County General Plan takes effect because the general plan uh does not support flaring. And uh, and that that motion passed, so it looks like
Lovely. Why, that is, that is a real We're turning the, we're turning a corner here. That's wonderful.
And then um, the, just uh, two other quick things. One is that uh we have election information on the uh city, OjaiCity.org, there's a election uh button that you can click to get election information, which includes um, a picture and map to the ballot drop box, which we think will be a um, you know, a, a mu- much needed commodity this year. Is that, is the ability to drop the ballots off without getting out of your car. You can pull right up. It's right next to City Hall. Uh, and so that, that map is available on that website and we're also gonna uh post some additional information on our social media pages. And um
And that's no post, that's no postage necessary, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, how often is that picked up or do they just leave it there till it's full or?
Uh, I, I, I know Gail's working, uh, the deputy city clerk, Gail Davis is working closely with the county and I think they are planning to do more pickups than they have in the past, knowing it's gonna be used a lot, but I don't know if we have a set schedule.
They, they pick up daily.
Daily pickup.
Yeah, okay, daily. Um, and uh, so just that, and then a last thing is that we are planning to sort of relaunch our general plan update. I think uh, uh, as far as bad timing goes, we had, we had scheduled our kickoff on March thirteenth, which we ended up cutting short to declare the coronavirus emergency at noon that day. So um, it's kind of, uh, we agreed, we wanted to do town halls and things like that and um we agreed to kind of uh, you know, hold off a little bit and see what happens. So over the last two months, we've been working on a plan to relaunch it. So the, the first step will be October, we're going to have presentations at each commission meeting. And uh, and uh, do presentations for each commission, get feedback from each commission. We're also working with uh different groups like businesses and things like that to schedule some other uh additional meetings and trying to get some of those additional voices we talked about, but uh you'll start seeing it pop up on some commission agendas and you'll start hearing, hopefully start hearing people talking about it. So we're gonna start trying to get that going.
Okay, is that uh it? Then we uh future agenda items. Uh, oh, pardon me, uh Randy?
Um, you know, this isn't an, an agenda item, but uh I just wanted to ask James, you know, James, we had um had the uh, the speed bump uh group over here on Drown.
Yes.
And um, yeah, I received uh, an email from Shawna today and she was just inquiring about the money that had been donated and set aside and, and uh what my thoughts are about proceeding with that and I I sent her back an email stating that, that it's a pretty difficult time, so I'm not sure if we're gonna be matching funds or if we're gonna be doing anything this year. Um, but that I would talk to you about it and probably talk to you tomorrow or there is writing back to her about where we think we are on that.
Okay, we can provide, what we'll do is we'll provide an update uh to the full council uh on uh how much was raised and what the cost was and then we can, we can decide. I'm not sure exactly.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any future agenda items? Well, we're adjourned.